And running again. You know, through COVID, it seems like people just kind of got out of that. To really be active. The food bank. They're starting a deal down there where the food. Has a best if used by date, that's two weeks coming up. They have that in a special place that people can just come and and get that without having to use their tap. Allocations. They're. Working on. Bio workers, the title one. That they're doing a trunk and treat. Deal up there to try to get people to come out and apply for jobs and get people more active and getting back to work. West Central Head Start was there, unfortunately, they don't have a program at Job Corps any longer, which. You know, it's just the reason that that we had it was a long meeting because everybody got up and got to talk about what's going on in their department. And what what that does is the wealth of knowledge that these other people have who maybe could contact and. Really try to do some networking to make sure that these programs that the state is funding. Gets. Gets the best use that we have in Crawford County. Telehealth, telehealth is. Is something that they're trying to get going, you know, where you can just call in and say what's going on. That's something. No one from public health was there to to talk about that. Just kind of partnership, so that was kind of an interesting meeting. We also had a wellness. Meeting. Have the concept is getting whittled down a little bit and you'll see on the agenda that we need to talk about the money that the county is. Set aside whether we get a letter showing that support that they can have because right now they're trying to get two different grants that. Is based on kind of what we have raised so far, and so the city's already put their money into that pool and so. The way that our ordinance reads is that we are not going to do it till we're sure it's off the ground and so we need to discuss that. But otherwise, the concept has been kind of shifted and moved around again, and I believe that the final concept is. Just this close to being accepted as the one we're going to go with. So another long meeting, but always good discussion there, but that's pretty much it. This week is my long week of mental health and we're going to start meeting again up in Holstein in person. We haven't done that since the state has taken over. But I'm gonna start talking about the budget because we are going to be short and then we'll also have. BVSC. Childhood meeting, so. Childhood meeting today, that was our week pretty much.
That's it?
Yep.
Okay, Ty. Yeah, it wasn't a busy week, but. I'll let eat, learn, I'll let Derek take care of EMA. That was one of the meetings that was out last week, but that's his committee, so. Highway thirty Coalition had one of their monthly meetings. They're getting pretty. Getting some pretty good. From the. Study people, I mean, nothing's ready to be out yet. We're getting some information from them already. And then we had the special hiring meeting for our new CDC director, we got a. I'm on that. Hiring group of whoever's gonna hire the new CDC director. But we're also going over. Like job, since we're, since we're doing this, we're going over job descriptions. And getting a little more elaborate on them and what each one does and. While we're focusing on the director, obviously, it also is bringing brought up the like for the tourism and then the. Office manager and whatever else we're just to make sure there's more clarification and then the other thing we're we're focused. Quite a bit on is the PTO that they're gonna start, the system they're gonna start using to better track who's where, when and how and how much time is being used and make sure time is being used when they take time.
Different computer program that they need to use or is the help?
They're actually, we're still working on. That's. For the tracking, they're still working on what they want to use. But it's something that Evan wants to make sure gets done here rather soon. Because it's, he doesn't want to leave that for the next person. He doesn't actually have a specific job he's going to yet. So. Neither we have an idea, you know, when we'll have him replaced or when he may bolt because he had the right job offer come up. But I don't think he's actively soliciting work yet. Maybe. Passively, but I don't think he's actively doing it yet because he knows he's got to get some things ready, some have some stuff set up on what he, what he, what he. That aren't in the particular job description, but are things that he does for the barbecue fest. You know, what different things that he does and different projects that are going on. So I think he's trying to write all that up. And. That's pretty much a mother and a few calls about this and that, I went down and did a video on that. Little gravel road that Land Six Road there where he's got the ground on each side down there by Manila handed that road. Boy, it looks nice. I'd like to buy a piece of ground, build a new house. Looks nice. Anyway. Other than that. I mean. Just typical stuff. Oh, Ray's down here today. Meeting with the. And everybody see that last set of emails? I don't know who all he's including, if I look at the top. He's down here today to go over with the concrete people and make sure they're marking off where the where the tower legs are gonna be. So that that's all set up right in right directions. I told him I couldn't do it today or tomorrow. I've got to be in Des Moines for an engagement tomorrow, that's a must be there, but. They, I think they can probably handle it on their own, it's not their first day doing this. But then there was also the stuff about adding in, Terry, did you see that about the? Let me get in here. Concrete pad work, alright. He asked the concrete people and Saber. If they could do us up a deal, he said what he's found is this time, since we don't have anybody already approved. And all that stuff, he says it can get pretty hectic about getting your pads for the for the shelter and the. LP tank port, and he said these guys could be doing it right along, I said, why didn't we have that in the bed to begin with? I'm kind of disappointed.
Yeah, I was too when I read that.
But these guys come back and these are, it's in here, Kyle, Jerry, Greg, Jerry, you got it. Anyway, it's got the cost. It's gonna be. About twenty five, I think it shows.
Yeah, it's twenty four something.
Yeah, just short of twenty five. Anyway.
I don't know if we can just throw them in there.
No, I don't know if we can, that's, that's what I was gonna.
You can't piecemeal out portions of a project like that. Just like city center, we can't, it's all gotta be our, if it's a big enough project.
And this will be a hundred thousand for the forest pad, so. And now part of that is the electric work too, which is a separate thing, I just don't understand why all that crap wasn't in there. A little bit disappointed in that. Yeah, what was it?
Especially since we ended up with someone that could literally do almost the whole thing.
Well, yeah, we could have did.
Yeah.
The whole thing, I mean, they. I don't know why they didn't. I mean, I'm trying to find where that was all broken down. Because we also got to do some wire planning and stuff. Well, or what 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 electrician were you gonna find the last minute to do that, now they. They don't have time to help you in six months out. Very happy about that. I do remember at one point we talked about. You know, having concrete and unlocal, and I think that might have been why you left it out.
Oh, because I thought we were gonna.
But we should have, yeah, right here, Shelter Foundation and Stu. I don't know what the Stu part is, I mean. Anyway, that was twelve thousand twelve six. The generator and propane pad is twenty five hundred. And the additional grounding, that's putting the ground generator, I suppose you got a ground and LP tank too, don't you?
Yeah.
Yeah, ground LP tank, the generator and the tower, you can do it all together then, just basically the cables all run to one, one ground, I guess. That's kind of the way I thought. Yeah, and that's what it is, it makes a damn change order, you know, which.
I have a timeout with that, would you? You bid it and you get the price because you're at a good price and you have a change order for you to start. Okay, that's not.
So you understand my frustration. Anyway, and I thought, you know, other than the concrete for the, for the shelter, I kind of thought everything was in this. But obviously. Please.
Was it oversight?
No, I think, you know, because we just, I don't think. Maybe he should have put put our feet to the fire a little harder, alright, I'm gonna have this lined out, you guys, you get after your concrete guys, done it. You aren't have to have that, or, you know, he probably should have held our feet to the fire a little bit, just let's face it, we hired them for a reason. None of us are professional.
So can he do the RFP for this change?
Well, we'll have to.
For the electric and the concrete or whatever, I suppose it's two separate RFPs, but.
But did we mention that in front of them? Or was that just a conversation we had here, you know, I don't remember. Having.
No, I think they were here one time. Him and Mike both.
Okay, okay, that's great, okay.
Because that was kind of early on. But, you know, tip, you know, we don't know for sure when we want that stuff, I mean, I wasn't sure that we'd need them, we'd even want them before next spring. Oh, because it was getting so late in the year. So anyway. He's down here in the area. Think we'll get him in here today because it sounded like late morning that we're gonna be done in Dow City. Exactly. Twenty four, just short of twenty five for the foresight, so. Yeah. Yeah. Additional grounding, nine thousand five hundred ninety dollars. Power grounding is.
For, for unit. Per site.
Per site, four times, so forty thousand is ground. Which probably won't your tower ground as well, it sticks up. I suspect there's some importance.
So basically what they're saying though is they found something to do this for this price where they tell it says.
Well, he asked Saber to do one because when he asked me, do we have RF, do we have an RFP or what? I said, no, we didn't know when that was gonna be ready to be happened. So he said, well, he said, we kind of like to have that done, so we put everything together by January, I said, well, it'd been nice to have known that. He said, well. I'll have Saber do one and then you'll have theirs, which is probably. We shouldn't have been discussing. If we gotta do the RFP, that's my. But. Yeah. Should probably just called you yesterday when I read this. Senate, you want, can I forward that to you?
Sure.
I already did.
You did, did Jerry, you did Terry.
And me too, I had.
Did you get a team?
We'd have, we'd have to do something. Be on that. You need to. Got something I want to get together and get going. I think it's a, it's a must.
Oh, yeah, that's gonna happen.
Yeah. I feel a drop back, but still.
But this, these aren't huge pads, I mean, we're not part of driveway. These are pads, so this is something you can put out a heated blanket and you can do this in January.
And they'll just have footings, right, they'll have. Well, they have.
I'm not sure what they all need for some of them like shelters amount if they're on a floating slab or if they're on a period footings or they got, I don't know.
That's a good question, but I I just assumed it was a slab.
Yeah, I just assumed.
I think there's a thickness, you know, but there could be something that's anchoring it down. But, but they do have, they do anchor it to that slab, so there might be something there, use them with the pier or something.
Smell appears down, pulling full tire, rebar. The tower before.
No, neither have I.
None of that.
Well, that's kind of why we hired these guys. Lead us through.
Me, my suggestion was just get an RFP put together, so we can start moving with it.
You want me to call him, he's supposed, probably in transit right now down here.
Sure.
Give him a call and get him on here for us to talk to. What's that?
An email or just whatever, say, that's the way we're gonna move forward is just have a. RFP for them and. See what kind of timeframe we need to work with here.
Okay.
That'd be my guess. Oversight of harm specifically, but partially.
Yeah, I'll take, I'll take Mike's blame.
I don't think you do enough towers to.
What's that?
The ground never gave that. So rod down and ground and put some wires to, but I'm sure it's pretty more.
No more attention than that for a tower. Probably got placements and everything. Okay, but I would have thought that the tower ground would have already been part of the tower prime. Maybe it is, it's just.
It's a big part.
Maybe they ground their part, the tower, but.
Because he says additional. Tower grounding is already set in there, so. It's more expensive to ground the rest than was the tower and that. But there's all the communications gear. So that's probably.
I'm sure that tower could withstand the lightning strike and not hurt anything, but if a radio. Put on, get fried, so you need one more.
A good thing.
Grounding for that.
Okay. Well, you want me to just send him an email or?
I think I'll try.
No, that's Kenny, I've got myself in enough trouble.
Eric. LMR met for their. Setting up their annual thing, they want to put in for a car or truck. EMA, excuse me, EMA, they put in for a truck. They're gonna need. Transportation stuff, Greg uses his own vehicle all the time. Yes, though it's not. It says it's the first time with our raster vehicle. I think he's right, so.
Can we talk about this though, since they were gonna be in charge of all these towers?
Yeah, that's what we're setting on that, and then to get a vehicle to have it with, because they don't have, really have a vehicle.
So is it in their budget for that or how's that happening or is it, are we talking a brand new truck?
Well, actually, they were looking at a couple of different things. They were, they were looking at a used one, I mean, not, don't be interrupt, but I was just listening to this part. But they had, they had a used one they were looking at, but then they were also looking, Stein, Steiny was there, so they were talking about the government packages. But. I think there was some stuff out of quality, you know, they, they have them, they buy a big packages of trucks. Because they use them for their electric company. Or their like, you know, their.
Ones out there were more expensive.
Yeah, they were, really.
Exactly. But they, you know.
They're watching them, I just thought maybe Paul would have something that maybe would be sufficient.
Usually when Paul gets rid of his, they're pretty well more out.
Do they need a truck trucker with a, what a vehicle like Dwayne has be?
Oh, they want a truck.
They get a haul stuff.
Pull a boat.
They wanted to be able to use all, do all the EMA stuff with it too, you know, if they have to haul, have a. Boats and.
Boat now.
I thought the sheriff.
I suspect the sheriff does. I don't know.
I don't know.
Where's the money come?
It's, it's.
Their budget, isn't it? Are gonna be in their budget.
Oh, it should be, it should be there. With the budget. No additional tax dollars would be needed to target there.
But when they did that budget amendment, we were supposed to know that that was gonna go.
It was, I think it was listed.
Was listed?
Yeah.
Well, then, never mind.
I'll see, right, find, check.
You know, there, there is gonna be more responsibilities with five towers, you know, that we've never had in our county before. So, I'm good either way, I just.
Curiosity.
Curiosity of how that works.
No. Don't say.
I don't say it in there, does it?
But I don't know, I just remember we talked about doing something.
We gave them the old one from the sheriff, I remember the sheriff had one they could borrow.
I remember talking about them having a.
And they're using that sheriff's vehicle now, aren't they?
Well, it was if it was available.
Well, when it comes to an emergency.
Actually, I have to discuss, Jim was talking about.
He's got vehicles that he's ordered from last year that he hasn't received yet.
Well, the thing with emergency. Is you can't really not make sure you're gonna have a vehicle, that's the key, you know, if you're talking about an emergency vehicle that. You can only use if it's available to free.
Yeah.
Greg's gonna be out there with them today. And he actually is helping. Mike coordinate with the electric companies to get temporary electricity out there to the sites when they start working. So. I'm just going over some emails here.
Awesome. Sorry.
Was there any else to be covered, what else to be covered? That was it.
No, pretty much that truck, then they, oh, they talked about. Didn't they talk about drones first a little bit there?
Yeah, oh, that's right.
Discussion topic, it wasn't.
I think they're looking at, doing it, they found the usage of it is fine.
They, they, they were talking about a thermal one, you know, like remember when the boat kid was out in the cornfield and then the last other little gal here? If they'd had a, one of them little drones with the thermal, then actually would have just been to see her hotspot down in the cornfield there.
The last one they wouldn't have seen on.
No, because she wasn't.
But they would have been able to scan to see if there's anything out there on the wildlife. I would agree.
And some of that stuff's getting real.
And they're, and they're looking at it nowadays, yeah, they're, they're looking at it and stuff like that, the thing that we pointed out was, is that here a couple of years ago. The insurance guy. You know, gave it to the, through the, through Hoffmann's. Who offered to give one, they turned it down.
Oh, really?
It's been five or six years.
I mean, do you think about like a thermal imagery drone or something?
Six or seven years ago.
If you got a kid shows up missing at night.
There's some restriction that go through that. You can't fly over a certain speed, height.
Just use that as.
Still be nice to have for other heights.
So, and that was by. A good turnout from all the mayors. Two pro tens from representing. That was it.
Eric, alright. First of all, last Tuesday night I had a WCCA meeting and I did that on Zoom. Uh, the Strategic Planning Committee, if anybody wants to see that report, it was given. Lighting their energy assistance, their goal was to assist five hundred, five hundred households. With emergency assistance and four hundred and ninety seven completed applications were done online, so they came real close to their goal. They had twenty percent of their applicants for their FADS program obtained employment. Uh, sixty four percent of the registered childcare facilities are enrolled in a program to help them serve more nutritious. Food programs. Outreach that eight hundred and nine unduplicated households receive. Pantry assistance. And then they had their strategic planning goals for the twenty two, twenty three fiscal year. They don't want to assist five hundred and fifty households, so they're gonna bump that up by fifty to do the online applications for the utility assistance. They want to try to help six hundred households maintain their water sewer utilities. Thirteen hundred food pantries will be provided to households during fiscal year twenty three, and they had some personnel policy. Updates which I found just interesting as far as their sick leave and vacation, all that, so if anybody wants to see that. It is here. Uh, and they have their Head Start Community Needs Assessment was presented, it said our, our Crawford County, our population of five and under decreased by a tenth of a percent. They continue to see an increasing number of children or families who speak a language other than English. And they said in Crawford County, there's a huge rise in, I don't know how to pronounce it, but it looks like Karen to me. Language, four hundred and forty three families live in the one hundred to hundred fifty percent poverty level, and I believe. There were twenty three confirmed cases of child abuse in children under five, and they have eight hundred and eighty children are without a registered daycare spot, so that's a lot. And then one of the things that was asked is if they do back, background checks on their volunteers and they said, no, they do not because their volunteers are never left alone with the child. And then their staff reports were given and I have all that here if anybody wants to see it.
I'm eight hundred and eighty, is that because they're parents that stay at home or with grandparents or?
They didn't say that, they just threw that statistic out there is. But I thought that was a lot and I should have questioned that more of why it would be eight hundred and eighty.
Well, I don't know. I don't, I don't know if it's a high number to understand it, I really don't know if it's that high, just.
How many counties?
I think our Latino population is probably pretty family oriented and they got a grandmother or mother who stays home in Washington.
But the key, key on here, what was the key?
So when you break that down though, nine counties, eight hundred families.
Council loss.
Yeah, let's think about that.
Five counties include.
County's included in that, so that's nine counties. Eight hundred families, when you see that number, it doesn't seem so huge.
It don't seem so unreal.
Right, right, you know, you think.
What's, and what's a certified, what is a certified?
Correct, they have to have credentialed and registered, I would say, to be certified.
My mother take, my mother's taking care of.
Couple of the neighborhood kids.
My wife, yeah, really, my wife takes care of, she just. Our grandkids, and she, so we run that mobile.
But the other part of that. Is. We have open spaces for daycare, but we can't get. People to come in and work, so there's another.
Another route to it.
But it almost feels like you and I have duplicate data boards where I'm talking about food banks and you're talking about food banks and I'm hoping. That the same people that were at my table are the same people at your table, otherwise.
There's certain items that we take up here.
That several months ago, they bumped up the wages and bumped up the wages, just trying to find help and it's one of those.
I think bumping up wages.
I think bumping up wages is one thing, but I think what people, why there's such a turnover is benefits, people are always looking for.
For better benefits.
Retirement, they want their insurance, they want paid holidays. Um, and you can pay them as much as you want, but until you get some benefits. Uh, that's what makes people stay, I need to.
We have, at, at Westville, we have employees, they're twenty-four seven.
Yeah.
They have to be eligible, so that's what's hard to find.
That would be hard too.
You get them that works our work Monday through Friday, all you want. Nine, opening Saturday or something, that's what's happened.
It really, yeah. And working with.
What they're paying them now.
With children.
They're starting to think about.
It's challenging.
What else do you got? Then I had, I was, listened to that OCIO webinar, the Office of the Chief Information Officer, that was on Wednesday around, I think it was eleven. Uh, and just Jake's discussed it before, it's. Oh, it's like a cybersecurity thing. It's for the local governments, paid for by federal and other grants, uh, EVMs stands, and they scan our computer services and other devices for vulnerabilities, they were, and reports are generated. Generated and. To eliminate issues, they offer cyber awareness training. Uh, they highly recommended the multi-factor off the, off the ten. Education, can't talk this morning. It has the ability to hunt and can teach hacks. Uh, and right now they're concentrating on the auditor's office. The last update was done. And it said, uh, starting January twenty twenty-three, it's gonna be done by districts. They're available twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, a monitor, detect, investigate, respond to cyber threats. And they have some growing needs, you need some false positives, so they're, they're planning, they're working on cleaning that up. They would like, uh, they would like to contact them uh, with these suspicious, suspicious activity. So they can check it out, because they're wondering if the threat is just like to us or if it's a statewide thing going on. And last but not least, they said use strong passwords. That's what I learned.
There you go, good job.
I'm gonna chest jump it now. What is it?
I heard it was in my ear, but I'm not sure.
That's, oh, and I, they also, I just took a screenshot of it, they were, a picture of it actually, that, uh, if you want anyone to come, I will forward the contact information to all of you. Then I received the thing from Jim Clark, that the fire station is going to get a trick or turn or treaty.
Yeah.
A trick or treaty at the fire station on the thirty-first and sixteenth. Uh, I'm sure you saw the uh.
Oh, that's nice.
The uh, space heater thing from Jake about not. Letting your space heaters into you.
Power strips.
Power strips, thank you.
Jimmy, do, do they really need space heaters? I mean, we had a no space heater policy where I work, none, wear extra socks or, you know, if you're. They're so dangerous, they are so dangerous and they just zap up. Yeah, so, but we just have a guideline that you can't put.
Hello, I don't work in here on a daily basis, so.
I don't either.
It's like in your office, is it cold?
No.
Your toes get cold?
No, I'm always hot when I'm in here, I get really.
Usually all boiler systems usually hot.
Right.
You got a little bit of windows.
On, yeah. Actually, to be honest.
I'm Jared.
That's it, huh? Well, perfect.
Seems like it's a busy week, but.
I attended a yes center meeting via Zoom on Friday. Till I got down over the hill and lost. What I, what I got out of it was still full, still struggling to try to find. Ways of. Finding bed spaces for everybody. Hope county's been keeping it full. Back to housing, the one that was involved in that school shooting up there will be upheld till they're eighteen. The school shooting, when was that back in the spring?
Anything said, what was the?
They'll be there till they're eighteen.
How old were they again, fifteen?
Yeah, probably fifteen, sixteen, so. Then I lost cell service, so. Uh, we are in the process of interviewing for Scale House operator of solid waste. There's some applications so far. Zach Minor said he would be interested or would be willing to serve on a commission to assess them, just. You got a hold of Kenny Blair or not, or he's said anything or not?
I stopped in there the other day and he was with somebody, but I will go back again today.
And you know, after we discussed this letter, it might spur some more.
Right.
Vacancies, I don't know. Hope not, but it's possible. But the biggest issue that I've been pressed with this week is the beaver bounty.
Oh my gosh, we back to them?
We are back to that, you know, we, I, I apologized to everybody that's called me and said, you know, we let that slip through our cracks.
Did we not finish up with that?
No.
We did.
We never got the, everything finalized. I don't know if we can do that yet, or, but then the, through discussion, I kinda. These people that are calling me are trappers and the farmers want them trapped.
Right. So we pay trappers, we pay farmers, we don't pay trappers, right?
Well, yeah, I, and I, me being a farmer and having. Uh, outbreak of beavers on one farm, I thought. You know, do I, do I come to the county and request a bounty on the fund just I that I got put on to save my crop? I mean, at the park, I, I, I'm like willing to pay a trapper to come get out of my own pot. So that's why I questioned the whole, is it, should it be taxpayers' responsibility to? Just food for thought. Definitely, there's a, there's a need to get some of these beavers in check, but.
I thought, I thought the reason we went, went after beavers other than other. Critters was because it was uh, when they, when they dammed up the waterways, it was creating issues into erosion and.
Under bridges.
And, and exactly, so I, I, I had assumed that's why, you know, otherwise coyotes can tend to be. A universal burden when they're running around the entire county and.
Yep.
So I understand why there's bounties on them at large, you know? You know, cause heck, they can affect everybody's livestock, your cats or your dog in your backyard or take your pick, you know, I suspect.
I think the thing is that they're wanting us bounty is due to, cause their furs ain't worth anything right now.
None of them are.
Nothing, I don't, I don't even know what a coyote is gonna be worth, if coyote ain't worth nothing, they know people but.
Nobody wants a beaver coat?
Well, apparently. You know, other counties have them, but they're also funded through drainage districts.
We don't tax.
We don't tax for drainage districts, but. Oh, I'm kinda thinking about more, I'm kinda exploring, I mean, if they're effective, county roads or bridges, like. We would pay somebody to trap them.
Right.
To get them out of there. We've done that. And if they're. Erosion has paid for them, if they're plugging the outlet of, of a dam within our county.
You got a dam and also they backing up into somebody else's property, then you got another problem.
Right, yeah, but flooding erosion can control that, so. It's unfortunate they're not worth anything. Cause they are a massive animal and you have one of the trap for kind of him smoothly. I just wanna hear whatever, I mean, we started the process, but now I, I look back at it, but.
Do we recall a dollar amount that we were proposing on that, did we ever get?
I think it was twenty or twenty-five dollars and we were gonna set aside like five thousand and when it was gone, it was gone. But we all, the biggest hurdle we don't think we were ever able to accomplish is how we could. Pinpoint that these were residents of Crawford County beaver, you know, not coming in.
I do remember that conversation.
They weren't Menona County or.
You know. And that's kind of where it got dropped.
Right.
We never could get over it.
I don't think we're gonna figure out where they came from, so that got up.
So.
I, yeah.
Do any of those surrounding counties? Do they have a beaver bounty in any of them?
Shelby does, uh. So then we can coordinate with them other counties, cause people start shopping around, I can get thirty-five and draw.
Exactly, right. So should we put this on the agenda for next week for further discussion and try?
Let's find some more information and put it on the agenda for next week and see if we can uh, try to.
I think we budgeted for them, I mean, through cons, conservation, cause they were gonna be the caretakers of the cow. And then we're gonna have to send the receipt up to you for. You're paid, I, I thought we had made at least that for much progress on it, but. Cause I know I remember talking to Chris saying.
We better have that number four.
We all have homework to do, find out exactly how we're gonna identify how where the beavers have come from.
I don't know, you would never be able to.
Finger print.
I mean, they don't have a certain language for Crawford County or, you know, I, you would have to be in honor system, that's why we limited to so much money.
I'll go to that.
I just really tore on that.
I know. Forget what you're saying.
Well, what does that open?
But the thing I was talking about.
You sound just go for bounty.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
To have a cake pan in town.
You'd have to bring you a pair of front feet and then they'd help them off somewhere, I remember getting a little kid.
Starling thing one time or? As long as that crap ain't coming in the courthouse, I'm good. More specifically, the auditor's office.
We could, we could have, we can have like a lemonade stand up here on, between the third and second floor and have a bounty account.
For Beaver Town.
We'd get a kick out of that, because we. We've been looking for something to go there.
They used to bring them in in coffee cans and Helen would have to stick with the nail and count them all out.
I did.
And then they write them out a little warrant, a little white warrant, and bring it across to, we cash them across.
Get one two dollars or whatever it was.
Sweet names. That monitor, can I ask?
That's what I had.
What, when do we have to RFP, I mean, what's the dollar amount, it's over?
Oh, I can't remember what the overage is.
I guess one, one thing that caught my attention on your sheriff's office is that we bought weapons, it says weapons is what they say, that there was. Five thousand, fifty-one hundred, just call it fifty-two hundred dollar expense. And so I went and grabbed the receipt and actually what it was for was for uh. Optics for their, for their ARs. And it was for six different ones, six, six different, six each. So I was just kind of curious if we, if that was something that, if that was.
I don't know if that's a high enough dollar amount.
That's what I'm, that's why I'm asking. It was the only thing that caught my eye, first I thought it was just like for one weapon, what do we do by sniper ammo, but then. When I realized it was for multiple pieces of equipment for stuff that we already have, you know, just additional, so then I wasn't quite so alarmed.
Okay, thank you.
I'll scribble.
I know.
Yeah. That's why I asked about our.
Figure it out, let me know.
Paul, come on now.
The Price is Right. That's kind of what we're gonna propose over there.
On a hundred street.
On the south side of the one forty-one?
Yeah.
It's down the road. It's kind of a terrible bridge, isn't it, a few years?
Oh, you know.
So am I.
We're still kicking.
Yeah, yeah, but just if you wanted. That's probably the best option, we'll go with the seventy foot center span, twenty-seven inch beams, twenty-four inch, on the approaches, put about a hundred and fifty foot ridge there.
Is that, okay. Metal ones out here for?
Yeah, they, they can't span, the center spans to be, you see where the piers are at each end.
We picked two guys up.
We got a place for that, we got a place for. But this probably is the best pick for that.
Yeah.
But anyhow, so that's, that'll be kind of a combination contract slash. Which group, it's a little bigger and we could probably tackle, but just, I just printed that out, so you gotta know that if you wanna. Share that with the.
Well, this one here isn't our, our cost, or do we share this with Menona or?
Yeah, it'll be fifty fifty, yeah, we'll uh, we'll do the design, we'll just kind of keep track of everything. We'll uh, we'll have to let it, it'll be a local letting, cause that won't be a DOT stand bridge, it'll be kind of our own hybrid. But it'll get the job done, it'll get, you know, it doesn't warrant spending a million dollars at that crossing, in my opinion, I think this is a good fit for it. I think everybody's in agreement to that.
Yeah.
So, but it'll still be, you know, we're probably still gonna spend four or five million thousand.
But it'll be a forty ton plus bridge or?
Yeah, it'll be legal. Yeah, that should be posted on it.
That's nice.
So, yeah, it turned out well, yeah.
I guess the job done, it's, that's just like the one that's, this is the one just western.
Yeah, that was kind of something that kind of came up with it. Again, we had two residents in the Little B Road. Across the stream, so that worked pretty well for us. Been a bit at twice, cause not a lot of contractors like. Yeah, yeah, that's worked out. So. Anyhow, yeah. Or, I don't know if you wanted to share. The, you know, it is. For, for an engineer, not everybody would appreciate that art, but I would. Uh, we're uh, starting the bridge deck, you know, about ten minutes, they're supposed to start tents, so it's gonna be kind of here, we're gonna head over there, so that's great, we got great weather to do that. Oh, great weather coming rest of the week, and so. Really, probably ideal. As far as bridge deck, twenty yards, there's a hundred and forty-seven, they're gonna order, so. That's the rule, so.
Yeah.
So yeah, it should work real well. Uh, the great crew, the two eightieth. Crack away, do some good stuff there, uh, bridge crew, they're gonna. Talk about whether to start another bridge, but. About five weeks, so we decided to jump into it, let's take it to the pile again, get backwards and. Last couple of weeks are too bad, they could do it. Colder weather, it turned on us, but we're gonna jump in and start an apple tree, is that, then, if this, this year. The roadside, they're all done seeding, just kind of putting everything away. They'll be done this week, everybody will be done except for me. Close, close the circle, go all the paved roads and take shots in that gravel, so go practice there, close to get done next week.
Yesterday morning, I think it was, the gas station. Give me a.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, item four there, I talked with you guys, we're just gonna. You know, when you sit down and you, you don't know when you're gonna get something, you don't know what you're gonna pay for it, it's a little hard to pull the trigger. So, we're gonna sit tight until that environment changes. Yeah, I, I agree with him, it's just that at some point you do. At some point we do.
You know, stuff rotated through, we always end up with nothing but a bunch of war else.
Yeah, and so, uh, but we, you know, we'll push that down for another year or two, but I mean, the problem is, they really don't know, and the order date got pushed back into November, which. You know, last week it was, this Thursday, you had to get it, yeah. And once that slot fills, then you're done, they don't know when they'll build feet. Super duty pickups again. It used to be you could walk in there in October, you'd have one in February or March.
Right.
Deliver it, so that, that whole thing's just gotta get self-worked out. Good news is, we're getting two new motor graders and two new dump trucks, we ordered a year ago, delivered probably this week. Golden Carl for a haul, yeah, yeah, so. So, yeah, anyways, yeah, yeah. Yeah, 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 so it'll be, uh, yeah, it'll be nice to see those come rolling, yes. Uh, and then motor graders, they're, they're doing a, you know, kind of an assessment of our, our, our motor graders, you know, looking to rebuild. That's why we have to come back to revisit, order a new one, or, or the cavity built, because there's still a process. Getting some stuff together for us, we'll have more information hopefully soon on that, I'll talk to Brownlee Francis next week, and see where we're at.
Do they have? The, the younger operators that, I mean, we, we lost a lot of veteran motor grader operators due to retirement problems. That was, I'm not saying they don't, but I was curious, do some of these newer guys know what these things are totally capable of? I mean, I just remember watching Buck's gear stuff, and I'm like, holy cow, I don't know what could do that, I think, you know, once them guys retire. That don't get passed on, is there, is there some sort of?
We send them to training, all the motor grader operators go to, it's through the local technical assistance program, so they all go to that training, plus they spend, you know. The experienced operator before they get out there. Encourage that, so that's what we currently do, now I did, I mean, a long time ago. I had a couple of cat representatives come out, we just did a one mile, kinda show and tell, you know, so maybe something to do again.
I just didn't know if they had like a, a cat training ground where you could send some guys over and, you know.
Not aware of that.
Okay, I think that'd be.
There is one down in Arizona. But uh, they do, it's called improving grounds down in Arizona, that, that, that's where they take new, you know. Prototype equipment and working, but I'm not aware of any.
Okay, I just, you know, we got these beautiful machines that are more capable probably of. Any old galleon or whatever that we used to have that. So like, as long as you get a new combine or whatever, it's like, boy, you just, you don't even know what they're all capable of, until you got the salesman or. Not even the salesman, the technician that has to work on them, out there showing you what you.
Yeah, you know, yeah, um, you know, I've talked to the, Chris, the C, you know, the CSR comes down, it's the customer service rep, he comes down and they do a walkthrough, they have, you know. When they guys, when it, you know, it's a delivery, kinda like they do with a new tractor, they're gonna like, they'll spend a few hours with them to talk about the new machine and. And, and all the things that are there, but no real training, if you will, that says, hey, you know, you can slip this thing way up here and you can go shave off a pain. That I'm aware of.
Okay, that's the kind of thing, yeah, that I was.
So.
Or that there's a way they could, you know, next summer or whatever, bring somebody down and take a level B road on and.
Yeah.
Get the number of the younger. Newer operators or even some refreshment for the, the season.
For the, for the guys that's been around, yeah, and we can look at something like that next year.
Say, let's tear this thing up.
Get after it.
Show what we're gonna put these machines, they're totally capable of. We're just thinking about it.
Nothing that I'm aware of, except to kinda create our own.
Well.
And that's not a bad idea. The uh, covered one bridge, everything's being light on that, so that's cleared all hurdles and it's moving towards like January, buddy. And the same thing with the uh, asphalt project in Pittsburgh, so our, have a couple of nice construction projects. Next year. And along with all the day labor stuff, so yours, you know, we're kinda like, we're gonna fill out pretty good, I mean, the one number that I continue to watch is our diesel fuel, it's just. It's kind of a little way over budget, so what, can I figure out?
Gas has gotten back down.
Yeah, diesel fuel adding.
Three thirty nine now.
Yeah. But I'm hopeful that we can continue to kinda get things done by making some adjustments to the. You know.
Diesel's plenty.
Yeah, there was, that, for a while too, this summer, I was thinking, might be better off just parking our motor graders.
Yeah.
When they're so dry, you know, you just move rock from one side to the other.
You, you like to do that, but then they just, the washboards, you know.
You, you can't hardly do it, but it's like.
Even like last winter, you know, we had no snow to push, but we had to be out there playing because the roads get so rough, because the ground, you know. It's, it's just a fine line you walk, you, you have to have the grain on the surfacing there when it does rain, but it doesn't rain. It's like driving on all this loose bark, though it's, I didn't know a good solution to it, I tell people the gravel roads. Try to do the best we can to take care of them, yeah, at the end of the day, the gravel roads and expectations, we just don't get ideal conditions. You know, it's been really dry.
Short of putting dust control on every gravel mile, which was not cost effective.
No, that's working though. I know, that, that's helping those residents out, so. Other than that.
Making a rich shell run out, so I wasn't sure. And then that, as our pipeline. Thank you, I can do that. So Zach Minor is kicking Wesley's stall, right?
He said he would be willing to. That's something we need to, or cannot wait till the first of January, man, this, what was the first in November now? Or do we just put it on the agenda for next week to? We can put it on the agenda for next week, just.
So it's just tax free money. Trying to get this check. You cannot have an invoice from that company and make it payable to a private person, it, it's tax.
That's the one that I said I don't know.
Or you, y'all aren't done with that yet? That gets a lot of people in the mind, I would be like.
I didn't notice it until she did.
Kempson, welcome. I won't be, I won't be expecting a phone call. Appreciate it, thank you, glad to see ya. Chris, we're gonna talk Beaver Bowing next week.
We didn't think you had enough to do.
I don't know too much about it.
Kempson, are you playing Donkey Kong there?
No, that wasn't yours, somebody else.
We need to put this on next week to get it approved, to get it out there.
I suppose.
Are we ready to have this? I think it's. I think that if, if we look at all time, that's the scope of what's going to be. Time we kick that can down. But I think that the, that that needs to be, what's the cost of putting that back in, because the law promise to make.
Thank you, ma'am.
It's not ready yet. Well, I don't know, I'm close, because it's not my RP, I put it together, you all need to. You need to vet it, the county attorney currently has it, we're waiting to make sure we have all of our teams cross and our eyes on it. Cause we've looked at it, I've looked. So we need those dates filled in. We have project wise, I'm hoping I have most everything captured.
Can you put it on, just for the question part, that forget it, that it. I, I think I've been what, what's the attorney says that? If the expense of putting a new wall and a new floor, how was the disadvantage of having that in there?
Right, no, and I think that's just. See what the proposals are, and then maybe, I don't know if you tweak the project after, I don't know how that works, to be, to be honest.
Just if this is a, you know, five thousand dollar piece of, you know, putting a new floor in and finishing the wall, uh, that to me would be a.
But you're gonna screw up the floor, because I would bet dime to a dollar, there's no carpet.
There's not, okay, I'll, I'll take that. That has the little squares like they do around, there are some of those squares of carpet that they could match in there, or even if, you know, somebody. Uh, is okay with it being a, like, say hardwood floor, and that's where you're gonna have to guess for something that we can. Be creative and not have to do all new flooring and whole new wall, because it's gonna be plumbing behind there.
Oh, yeah.
You're gonna have to tap on the plumbing, and that always leaves a mess, always, and we're gonna have to door board, you know, something.
Yeah, because that's the parts that we're missing, the supervisors have worked out, and then we'll put those dates in. And like this, we, that needs, that's why it's highlighted, because it's not accurate. And then. Like a timeline regarding provision of services and must be completed by date. When the proposal will be opened, and then when will that announce, right, so that'll depend on all those other dates.
Cause if he hasn't even looked at it by that date, so what from the time.
See how optimistic I was. No, I don't, no. So he functions as a sole provider. And frankly, it's not our fraud, if he gets fraud, if he was committing tax fraud. It's not us. Why not, should say Crawford, not a Crawford student. You are right. Yeah, went to Isaac Wall League and then Isaac Wall League donated it to the county. And we just received CRP money from probably.
For that property?
Terry. I think that's why we pay them, that's why we were gonna pay this.
Right, yeah, we need to pay partial, yeah, right.
Thank you.
Terry. Money we give to him now. Yeah, yeah, he'll get it ten ninety nine for it. It's over six hundred dollars. Yeah, but that's for buying supplies, I mean, you don't get a ten ninety nine. Is it supplies? They actually depends on how it's uh, put into your system, whether it generates a ten ninety nine or not.
Do we need to reply back to the teamsters, or do we?
I let Aaron know, he'll reply.
Okay, all right, thank you.
That's what I just asked him, do we have to get hold there?
Email, or I scanned it and sent it to him also.
Thank you.
I should have had you all on the same email, but I wasn't thinking that far.
So here we get chains here, right on time, like clockwork.
She just won't come on down.
Come on down, all right. Been waiting for you. Walk slow, we got a minute.
It is well. Keep you moving.
Oh, that's great. Yeah, I've got one thing to the next, the next to next. First for me, do you guys have my report? I got some.
I do not.
Here you go, this is. They're cold, they're in my car, so. I have another thing before this. Anybody else? Okay.
Oh, yeah.
All right.
For coming.
Yeah, no problem. So this will bring us through October. Actually, this, I wrote this a couple of weeks ago, so. Um, first, second of October, so there's been just a little bit changed since then, but. Um, this will cover everything pretty much from July-ish. I think it was the last time I was here through October. Um, okay, so for the completed events, things that we've been working on that are done now for this year would be the biggest, obviously, tricee barbecue. Um, I do not have complete financials yet. It takes some time to get that stuff with the event this size. We're waiting on a couple. Uh, invoices to be turned in and sent to us yet, and some of our grant money to be turned into us, so I don't have that yet, but I will by the next time I come. So I will give you the actual numbers then. Um, some of the things that we did, um, that I can tell you about, uh, we did double our initial sponsorship goal during the event. So we set our initial goal at forty thousand and we ended up raising eighty thousand, so. Um, we were super excited about that. Um, we worked really hard in, in gaining sponsorship and I think. It shows that the businesses in our community are starting to really, you know, really enjoy supporting our local events and. Um, you know, are, are starting to support them in that way, so we really appreciate, really, really appreciate that.
I ask you a question about that real quick. So with that doubling in sponsorship, when you finalize the financials, are they gonna show?
So they're not gonna be completely, I get that, that's a good question. So they're not gonna be completely doubled. Um, our bigger sponsorships definitely bring in a lot more money and we will have some more space after that. However, with the bigger sponsorships, there's also bigger things that we have to give them as perks of.
Okay.
Sponsored.
Yep.
So some of that will cut out some of that profit. Um, so there isn't gonna be complete doubling of the income.
I got, yeah. But so when you actually itemize out your financials, do you put in those perks then? I mean, just like a line item of perks?
So some of the things, oh, like are they sponsorship benefits? Um.
Just kind of trying to figure out.
Actually, I don't, I don't do the financials, so I'm actually not completely sure. There will be some things that are, because like, say, for example, like, what Smithfield, you know, uh, was that event title sponsored?
Right.
So there are some things like, um, selling, and we've never sold the title sponsorship before, let alone any of the other bigger ones, so this was new for us. Right. Um, so some of, some of the things like, um, there was jackets. That was one of the things we'd already, already had listed, like, you know, they could get a certain number of jackets there. With the barbecue logo and their logo on it.
Okay.
So that was one of the things. So that will be a separate invoice and things like that, because we have those separated out. Some of the things are like, they get some barbecue bucks, or they get a certain number of drink tickets or things like that.
Right.
That may not be.
Yeah.
Included, that kind of stuff.
Real money.
And like a lot of it is advertising things. I'm not sure exactly how that is, because there's bigger advertising with the bigger sponsorships. So some of it will be, some of it may not be, um, but I don't, I don't prepare those financially.
The thing I'm hoping to see is that that bottom line leaves us some seed money for next year.
Exactly.
Uh, there will be.
Exactly.
Use it all and.
And I'll get to that.
Okay.
No, that's fine. And I will have more specific details the next time, so. Um, so yes, we also, besides that, um, doubling of our sponsorship goal, we were also awarded the meet in Iowa grant. Um, at twenty-five thousand dollars. That was our preinitial, you know, um, that was what they said we could get. If we spent what we said we were gonna spend. So that has been submitted since I, um. And I guess I had done it at this point in time, so we're waiting for the approval on that and the distribution of that check. It's a reimbursement program, so we have to show, yes, this is what we spent, and then they give us the money back. It's still in the examination stage in their, in their office, but basically all we did beforehand was like, these are our receipts that we had from last year. And our receipts only went up, thanks to COVID and pricing and shipping and everything this year. Um, a lot of the cost of our vendors has gone up significantly, which also does feed into some of the profits that we've had before, but. Um, but yes, so, so we're, we should be getting, fingers crossed, getting that full twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, we didn't change anything from what we did the previous time, so there shouldn't be a problem with that. We also increased our hotel stays during that, during our event, the ancillary, ancillary event alone, which is the stay shop and feast, um, thing that we did. That had, we, it was a package people could buy. They could stay at the cobblestone, either cobblestone location. We gave them a hundred dollar CDC gift card and they could have a meal at Holly's, the fourth post. Um, and we sold fourteen packages, so we did get fourteen extra hotel stays that were pre-event, plus all the ones during the event, so that was a good thing as well. Um, we had record sales in like every area of the event likely. I mean, some of them I know for sure, she's still tabulating some of that stuff, so. Um, we did have record-breaking beer sales. It's thirty to fifty percent higher than our previous best year, so.
We can run it out.
For sure. On Friday night alone, yeah, we were, we've ordered more than we've ever ordered and we still ran out on Friday night. Well, not completely, but something, so yeah, we had a great, great year for beer.
I swung, I swung a lot of beer.
Our, our, um, beer distributor told us after the event, he said, you know what, I'm gonna tell you guys, you are now the biggest, highest selling beer sales of any event I do.
Wow.
In the whole region that he distributes. That's a big awesome thing. Yes, that is an awesome thing to be able to say, because that's, that's the money. Yep, I do think. It does. It depends on the band you have, and that's why we try to pick bands that will generate beer sales.
Yes.
And sometimes we hit it.
Friday night.
They, they did a great job with, yeah.
Best grand I ever.
I will say that. They were probably my favorite brand that we've had a long time. I got a picture of Jerry with the one. Yeah, so we had, we did a great job with the beer service and two vendors as well. We had a total of thirteen of them and, which is one of our highest counted vendors we've had. And all of them left very, very happy. I think our highest vendor, um, took twenty thousand dollars in sales in the end.
The lines were ridiculous.
But all of them left very, very happy, excited to come back next year. Most of them, you know, had a, all of them had a very good take, one of their best weekends, or events they've ever done.
We need more to sell lines for Salt Rages.
That is something that we've talked about at the office.
Think the word would get out.
Where, yes, so this is. This is the thing. So, yeah, we're starting to get well enough known that we started, we're starting to, and so that is something that we've been working on, is the future of how eventually we can expand. Um, there are some things that we're gonna have to be at capacity at for a few years, just because we don't wanna overstep and outgrow too, grow, try and grow too fast, so that we. You know, spend too much and then have issues, so, um, it'll be a little bit of, you know, back and forth, but, um, that is something we discussed. We're, we're working at, looking at how, what our capacity is, our maximum capacity in the layout that we're doing right now, and how we can. Work within that and what we can do in the future to move, because I agree, that's, I mean, like, there were a lot of lines. I mean, there's always been lines, but it's now. They, so, which is not a bad problem to have. It's just something we have to look forward to in the future. Right. We got pretty darn lucky again. Um, it was likely the highest attendance we've ever had, um, and both nights were huge, which is good. A lot of times we'll have one night that's a lot bigger than the other this year. I think both crowds were equally big and equally having, you know. Doing, you know, buying food, buying drinks, buying all the things, so, yeah, it was, it was great. We had people coming from all over. I know there was a crowd from Carol and other places on Friday night. There was people from Omaha on Saturday night. We just had a lot of people coming from all over, so that's exactly what we're looking for, so.
Kind of fun to figure out a way to exploit the campground a little bit more.
Right. And we do, we did have some, and, and I've been working with that, yes, so I have had, um, some of our teams, I was actually working with our teams and our judges specifically, um. Um, we had some barbecue people who were interested in coming early, so I had, even before the event, had some people who came in during, and spent the week here in Edison. Um, that were related to the KCBS competition. I agree, it would be nice to have, um, more people using it during the event time as well. That's something to look at. I don't know what, if they were, if they had a lot of those things, to be honest, that's something I hope we can check into and see.
I mean, even if you had, like, somebody that, like, the party buses, get on a shuttle bus.
Right. Well, and, and that's what we're actually talking about the, see, that was one of the issues that came up. I don't have in here was parking. We actually, for the first time in a long time, had a parking issue this year. We have not had that. Pretty much forever. Um, we've tried the shuttle bus. We have, so we're talking about ways we can circumvent that in the future and what that'll look like. So we are like trying to proactively think through some of these problems that are now coming up, because we are hitting our capacity in the event, so. That is one thing that came up.
Excellent.
Yes, so we had a successful KCBS competition as well. We had new reps, reps from KCBS this year, so we worked, it's up this year, how it would go. Sometimes there's some little things where you have to work with new people, but. Um, it went really well. I've gotten a lot of, of good feedback from our teams and our judges. Um, we had got top ratings from our reps. They said, you know, absolutely wonderful, and they told me that I could. Go ahead and run in the other festivals, because we did a really great job. Um, and we actually, as I said, had some teams and judges arrive early in the week and spend the week in the area, which is fantastic, because that's not only, they're not now just coming for the event. They're coming to enjoy our area too, and spending money then in our campground and in our stores and gas station and all the other places, restaurants, so. Um, that was great. And then, and one of the groups actually bought one of those stay shop and feast packages, and then they spent a night in the hotel too. So, um, that's kind of our goal, is to get it so the teams like to come back and spend some time in the area. Um, really.
Go back and talk about it.
Yes, and then go back and share with other people. We would like to grow it in that way, so that's, that's our goal. It's been, it's been hard with, with the KCBS competition since COVID, because the price of meat has gone up significantly. And the price of gas, and those are two of the big factors in getting teams to compete, and it's not just us, it's all across the board. So that's one of our things, is how can we make this a place that the teams want to be, not just because of the competition, which we do have competitive payouts, but also to, because they like the environment. So that's one thing we're getting some good feedback on, um, and something we're working out to. We have more sponsors seeking us out. Iowa PBS called us back in August, July or August and said, hey. Can we advertise your event and be at your event? And I'm like, and be a sponsor? And I'm like, sure. So they did thirty-second promos for a month on Iowa PBS to, specific to this region, um, saying, um, so like the surrounding area. Saying, come, you know, hey, we're gonna be a tricee barbecue fest, um, come check it out, blah, 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 blah. They had me sending script. I don't have it memorized, but, um, but it was just neat to have. You know, like people say, hey, we know about your event at a state level. We know about your event and we're gonna help you get people here. And they literally just. Wanted to come set up a table, distribute some things to their, um, customer base, so they came, they were only here in person on Saturday, but they had it in the hand. Um, and that was really cool. And then this Inbird, um, is a thermometer company that, again, reached out to me and said, hey, we would like to send you thermometers to distribute to your competition teams. And I'm like, cool. So they provided, um, nice quality meat runners. Yeah, 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 we had, we had some really nice, uh, judge items. So, yeah, so we had a great, we've been having some great luck. It's, it's a different place to be with people reaching out to us instead of us having to be capable to do things, you know, we're, we're, so that is part of it. Um, we're starting to get a little more in, in that, we're starting to get a little bit more, like I said, um, leeway. I guess I thought I had it in here, but no. Um, so with the way it's looking, we will have a fairly healthy profit, um, which we haven't. Usually, we're just about even. We break even, maybe a little bit over. We don't really lose anymore in the event, but we haven't really had anything we can grow with, and our goal is to grow. So. This year, we should, between the, the higher sponsorships and that, we should have some breathing room, because again, costs went up, we had to get some. We had a last-minute change with the water walkers that left and we had to bring something in that was gonna like attract people to come, because that's a huge draw for us, and losing that really hurt. Um, and it wasn't because of us, they just had an equipment failure and they couldn't get replaced in time, so it felt really bad about it. So that's when we brought up the BMX show. Which did draw a very nice crowd. It did cost, uh, also a little bit of money, so. It was nice to have a little work with, but, um, even after all of that, we will have some. Set aside now that in case we would have a bad day or a bad year, we're not gonna completely break the festival. That being said, the goal is hopefully we can continue to grow these sponsorships and keep having these good years like this, so that eventually. Our goal, end goal, some point, is to have this be a self-sustaining event, so that we can ask, because we do get, you know, grants and things like that every year. Eventually, we would love to have it where we don't have to do that, like we can just pay for the event out of the event. So it's not gonna happen overnight, but this year really, really did help, um, with the way things went, with sales. Um, with the bands we had, with the sponsorships we had and all of that, so we were really excited about that. Um, we already have, working on bands entertainment and all that stuff for next year, and people have been reaching out, which is great. And then we're also excited that we had the, you know, the Bulletin Review did their little thing, and we were not only vessel of the festival, but the best place to volunteer, which is the one that really gets to me, because that's exactly my. My place that I feel like I want people to enjoy helping us, because we can't run this event without volunteers. I mean. There's four of us at our office. It's just way too big. So the fact that people are helping and love doing it and, and wanna promote that, that's, that really touched me, so I was really excited about that. Um, anything, anybody else wants to know regarding barbecue, any other questions?
Other little bit of stuff?
Next year will fall on the same weekend as last week, because.
I don't remember. I don't remember if that's another overlap year. We have like two or three overlap years, and then we have like two or three. Yeah, I think we're maybe on and off here next year.
Cause it is.
It goes back and forth, and I agree, and I feel back too, um, and.
Bigger events, you know, everybody likes to go to sleep. That's, it's sad that they're conflicted.
Right, and if we could do something about it, we absolutely could, but at this point in time, we're kind of locked in, they're kind of locked in, and it's just kind of what it is. Um, we try and do the best we can to, to, to go, you know, to cross-promote and do what we can to help them as well, and we encourage people to vote about. We really do, we're not, we're not wanna be the, the place that says. Don't go, you know, you gotta stay here. No, we will, we want people to support both, so. Um, if there was a way to make both of them huge, I would do it. In a heartbeat. I'm, I'm, I'm always thinking through that through too, so. Um, anything we can do to help that out too, that would be, yeah. Um, okay, so other things we've done, highway one forty-one grass sales. Go through these facts, because they're not very much. Um, so we did increase the number of sales. We had an highway one thirty-one sales. We distributed the sales maps and, um, included the local restaurants and lodging. I would like to see the number of sales that are advertised increased. There was a lot of sales in town that day. But not a lot of them that chose to, I mean, there was quite a few that did not choose to list them. I don't know why. It's free. We do it for free. It costs us money, a hundred bucks to participate in this, but we think it's a good thing, for one, because it's on the one forty-one route. We're one of the bigger communities, so we have a higher percentage. Higher likelihood of being used as an overnight stay, since it's a two-night deal, um, so we do it, and, and we don't charge the people who participate, just because. We just want to have more sales there, and then a hundred dollar, you know, we're, we're happy to take that, just to get more people. So I'm looking for ways to increase the number of people who actually advertise and not just set up a sale. That's something to think about for the future. Um, and helping the Autonomy Committee, they're, um, they are waiting on their deliverables from their second phase and working on funding their final phase, but things are moving and progressing pretty fast right now on that. And then we've had a fair number of visitors and residents coming into the area, so we're hoping those. Upcoming things, tomorrow I have a regional meeting for the tourism, um, the tourism regions have changed. So, um, like they were through the state and now the state does not have tourism regions anymore. They have. Changed their organization, so Western Iowa decided to keep their Western Iowa tourism. It's gonna have to be self-funded, so we're working on a regional meeting to decide what that's gonna look like. Um, fully, full steam ahead in my special right now, um, so we'll be getting, you'll be hearing more about that very soon. That's gonna be December third, and we have all the normal things that we had last year, same location. We're adding a Santa run, um. On, at the beginning of the event, so I'm excited about that. We wanted to do that for several years, and we're still gonna have the free movie and the Santa visits, the carriage rides. And, and the night with the lighted parade, which hopefully I can get more entries in this year, because it was kind of last minute from last year, so. Um, lots of other things too. It'll be a busy day and it'll be a lot of fun. Um, and El Manas and Red White and Boom obviously come up in the next year. Something I wanna hit really, really quick before I go. Is this Country, Country Travel Discoveries. I think I maybe mentioned it before, I'm not sure, but that is a travel, um, it's a tour organization that publishes those magazines that people can go do the tours, like the banks, you know, like all the different people can sign up, or it's a bus tour. Um, and they do worldwide, but, um, they chose to do a Western Iowa tour. And they, we were not the only location they looked at, but they had contacted us and said, hey, we'd love to have an overnight in Dennison. Pitch us your idea, and if you like it, we'll book the tours. So Evan and I worked on that, um, and we did end up featuring the Donnerie Theater with it, because it just made the most sense. Especially, it was pretty short. We had pretty short notice to come up with. Especially it was pretty short. We had pretty short notice to come up with this. So, um, we did that and we did get the tour. So in fall of twenty twenty three, they will be coming with. Um, I believe forty people at a time, um. On five different dates in the mid middle of the week. So they're midweek dates. So they won't take away hotel rooms from our weekend guests. And weddings and stuff like that. Um, they are, they're staying at our local hotels. They will be visiting the supporting the Donnerie Theater as well as eating, you know, in restaurants and local here and hopefully have some time to do some shopping. So. Um, if if it goes well this year, there's a chance that it could extend into another, um, you know, future years, either every other year or every year even potentially depending. If they decide to alternate Eastern, Western Iowa. So, um, we're excited about that. That's the kind of thing we've been wanting to get more into and getting more awareness into our area. So, um. Pretty pretty thing is pretty neat that we got that hooked up. So, um, otherwise just normal things. I've submitted a few grants lately and. We're working on ideas for updating our marketing and website stuff always, but especially now that barbecue is done. So. It's kind of the rest of its normal office stuff. Sorry, it took a little bit, but I know barbecue is a lot to talk about. All right. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Have ordinance, tax abatement, personal, town, town conservation or really his property. Going item.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
Uh, obviously, we need, we do we need to abate them or do we just need to pay them? Because we do receive income.
Let's get in. Taxes? Just under three hundred dollars.
Year, yeah. And the whole property is will receive some sort of income off it because it's all in conservation reserves. So. Would probably need to just pay the taxes.
Not abating.
That'd be that'd be my suggestion because there's really no need to abate them if they're making.
Yeah.
Yep, come on, Chris, do you?
Yeah, someone just came up as if I just had some confusion. I'm no land tax expert. I'm a renter, so I don't pay land taxes. But, uh. Yeah, this is, if I understand right, this is from. When it went to, when they bought it on auction, the Ices, there was a few months, it was like Mayish. And then we got it in January and I believe this is actually the taxes for when the Ices had it, but obviously they've they gave, you know, well over forty thousand dollars. So I have no problem. Paying that. I just had confusion because we'd never got. Tax bills before.
I don't think there's any delay. Is it? It was all brought up today. Well, yeah, it wasn't paid, but there was nothing in the past that's carried.
No, I think.
No, that's everything that's.
That's for the end. If I understand that right, it's for the last few months of twenty twenty one. Because it was due in January or whatever. That's.
I talked to Mike Peterson. He was, I thought he was going to check on it and bring that up to date. Through the Ices or.
I don't think I, as far as I understand. That that's from the end of twenty twenty one. The receipt says twenty twenty, but on there it says twenty twenty one. And then I guess I had like going forward, I understand apparently you you pay taxes if there's CRP income. Yeah. So going forward, it's like A heart run has CRP, right? So I would assume we would do it the same way. That that does not run through my office. No. So I would assume this would be the same going forward.
Yeah, this doesn't this belong, does this belong to Crawford County? You did one traffic pan conservation. Crawford County.
Finally given over. They buy.
Right. They they were just looking confused because they owned it for six months or whatever. It's just six or seven. So I have no promise. Like I brought the credit card and credit card line over paid, you know, it's only, it's not that much money. Like going forward. What's that? What do we get for revenue? I have no idea. I'm not involved in the CRP contracts anyway.
We just got our money this morning.
It's not a lot, a thousand maybe.
There. Some of it's.
I was thinking that when I was signing the papers, it was around.
Yeah, I I would someone in the two thousand range, I'd say. Roughly.
Yeah, it was in the two two thousand.
Yeah, and there are just several different programs.
There's three programs on that.
But I just need to know if we have to pay it fine, I can go pay it. And then going forward, what's the procedure going to be? Like it will just be, I have no idea how a heart run is handled. I assume it would be the same way.
Yeah, we'll pay partial taxes on it.
So I don't know if I have to go and do this.
I don't know. We should be able to take care of that.
Sure.
I was just confused because we've never gotten. Yeah. Right. I I have just never been involved in the process before.
That's all four of our CRP contracts, I.
Yeah, it's all four of them.
Yeah. Yeah. So we'll.
We are not this.
We're making money. We have.
Can I talk to you?
You tell me.
Can I come talk to you about some about this? Um, so. I know like either the tower, we do a partial exemption and the county pays taxes, kind of like how the.
Because you've never been involved in that.
On the tower. Would this fall under that same range or?
I have no question. I just. I was never involved in that process.
Okay. Can I come in? I'll bring our C R P contract and maybe we can figure it out or whatever. I can't remember what it is. Yeah. Okay, thanks. Yeah.
Someone.
We'll figure it out. So then in the future. Yeah, and some of that's already sent it off. It does. It does say, yeah. Because I printed it to. Yeah. So those are the, it's just shy of. Because there's already about eight percent exempted. That's four.
And there is some maintenance that's happening early on. There'll be weeds and things like that.
Okay.
We'll take no action on this because we're going to pay the taxes.
The receipt. Yep.
We'll get that screen though. Yeah, I was, I just never been involved in that process. So I. It's never ran to my office previously, so. Sounds good. Thanks, Chris. All right.
Uh, ten twenty five ordinance for tax abatement for. Volunteer emergency services. That failed some that round. All right. Uh, this one's probably way just upgraded.
It's the, I don't know what it was before, but this is the most recent. And then there's an addendum that goes with it. All right. So. The county wants to entertain the new ordinance that would give a slight tax abatement to emergency. Service providers, and this is the proposed ordinance for that. Um. Essentially, as it reads now, is if you are a emergency service provider, has to find an Iowa code, and I didn't print off a hundred point B, but it includes volunteer firefighters. Uh, I believe EMS services. That they would qualify, if you look at the addendum, for a certain tax payment after a certain amount of time. Uh, there's, as it's proposed now, there's a graduated abatement amount. Uh, kicking in after five years of service would be a two hundred dollar abatement. Eleven to fifteen years of service would be a three hundred dollar abatement. And this is to the homestead. Sixteen to twenty years would be four hundred dollars. Then over twenty years would be five hundred dollars in a payment. Now, look at article. Article two, section three, entitled federal for abatement. And then put the page subparagraph C. It outlines for an emergency service provider who has twenty or more years of service. Would essentially get that after twenty years of service, even if they retired, would still. Get the benefit of that five hundred dollar abatement. It would just continue. Yeah.
Until.
Yep.
Sell their property or.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so what happens with a widow in that case?
I don't, that's not covered in this. I mean, if they would qualify for the abatement, I guess the. The board would have to make the decision if they want that abatement transfer or not. If it runs with the property, it runs with the person. It's not, that's not specifically addressed in that.
Run with the person. If I sold my house, that guy's not a firefighter. We definitely not think they'd be. It has to be with.
If you've served twenty plus years and you passed away, I mean, the board could say, well. Put up with being gone with our calls and so there we. Wish to extend that tax abatement.
And that was quite a surprise.
Right. I mean, that's something we can discuss.
That's.
Yeah, there is no language about surviving sponsors, which there can be. And I sent an email out earlier just on a couple of issues, uh, for the boards, uh, to decide on. So. Right now, the language, the abatement kicks in after five years of service. And that's just, uh, I believe it was, um. When this was first proposed in the state legislature didn't pass, but when it was first proposed, I think that's the language in that. That they had, but there's no reason it has to be five years. If the board wants to make it after three years of service or two years of service, it could. We just put five in because that's the language that came to us. But the board, if they want. To do it and same with the graduated amounts, um. You could graduate how you want. Uh, the graduation levels could be less time.
Eric, did you see the question you had earlier about the firefighter one and then E M T I? That's that's where you have to be to. You can't just be, you gotta be a trained fireman. That's what I'm saying. That's on this, that's on the addendum.
Yeah, so in this article two provision, uh, section one. And I think I'm going to need to, uh, I mean, just hand it to me like.
Sure, this is draft.
So there's nothing we can really work out for action today, are we?
It it is, but.
But you can't take action on it.
No, right. Yeah, no, I mean, an ordinance would have to have several readings.
Yeah.
Um, but where it says. One more years earns less than five thousand dollars per year for services of volunteer, you know, that. What what is the actual verbiage for volunteers? So we've got a volunteer that's earning, uh, you know, four thousand nine hundred ninety nine dollars. And then you've got a volunteer and and by volunteer, to me, you're not making any money if you're volunteering. That to me is a. You know, how how do you become a volunteer and you've been.
The only answer I would have to that, knowing these bigger communities such as the Dennisons possibly, I'm not a hundred percent sure of the Carols, uh, some of them. Communities, they actually. Receive a stipend for calls that they attend that they five dollars or. No firefighters or whatever. And then some are actually.
Those stipends.
Yes, and the city would pay them stipends. So.
A city, okay.
That's actually becoming more.
So you get more more prevalent due to the shortage of.
Does Crawford County currently have that policy? Does Crawford County have any five, any people that are volunteers that get paid?
I think they're starting, I think some of the medical providers are.
They are.
Yeah, you know, and so they build the insurance company and then it comes back and I believe.
You ambulance crew, it does get a stipend.
I believe they're starting to do that, but.
Okay, that that's kind of in one of the, uh.
Checking, but I believe that that's coming from that.
Okay. Uh, when people see things on the agenda, they call with their concerns. And, uh, that is the concern basically is what will this do to our bottom line budget? How many? People in Crawford County who will be considered these firefighters, you know, they use a number of twenty five thousand that comes out of our test cars, you know. You know, how many, how many, is there a way to get the number for how many, uh, individuals?
I think Dwayne did do some research on that with the current roster of Crawford County Fire DMS providers.
Well, I took, I took a list from our, um, K T. Department. There's about two hundred. Volunteers in the county. It could be two ten, it could be one ninety. About two hundreds. And out of that, um, so I went through and and compared that to homesteads.
Okay.
So, you know, maybe they have a homestead in a different name or a corporate name. So, so there's margin of error there. And also they need to reside according to the ordinance. They need to reside in their.
Yep.
Response district. So, you know, just glancing through this list, I can see a handful that don't. So, you know, so again, you've got a few, but so there's about eighty on this list.
Okay.
And so if I go total. Um, property taxes paid by those eightyish, you know, I'll just, I'll give you this list if you want to. There's about a a hundred sixty five thousand dollars of property taxes paid. So ten percent of that would be about sixteen thousand. And some of these are over the five hundred. So that amount, yeah.
Over twenty years, you mean?
Well, no. So some, if you took like my taxes are fifty five hundred dollars.
Okay.
So ten percent of that would be five hundred and fifty, which is over the five hundred. So you would go back to five hundred.
So you're you're capturing the stop. Five hundred max. Yeah. Five hundred max.
So when when you, when this ordinance would go.
Who, does this fall on the your department to maintain or is it under what department is it to be maintained?
It qualifies.
Yeah.
No, no, no. Who's going to, who's going to manage this?
Who's going to manage this?
Where where are these?
Every year.
Another thing I will say, I don't like an abatement from being the treasurer. After my tax rule set, I don't want two hundred abatements coming into my room. I don't mind or I didn't. The two hundred abatements doing that's one thing, but then to get your tax rule to balance at the end of the year is a real thrower. I spent weeks, if not months, trying to do that. So I would rather this be a credit beforehand like your, I mean, your home state credit or your military credit, sign up. Top end instead of having all these abatement, two hundred abatements or even fifty coming in because that screws up. That's some nice insight there, Jerry. Thank you.
Maybe abatement isn't the right word for it because you are getting the money back. Yeah. So it's like the veterans hundred percent credit.
Yeah.
You know.
That's what I thought we were.
Get that back. You know, we don't get a percentage. We get all of it back. So I think and Colin can jump in anytime, but I I believe it's written that. If so, the credit comes out at sixteen thousand, we would reimburse sixteen thousand. So it's a dollar for dollar. You don't lose a nickel.
Right. Coming out of the tower fund to re to backfill.
Yeah.
This project.
And that's in, I don't know.
Another thing that's on here is it says we're going to abate taxes and special assessments. I don't think we can abate special assessments. Those are the cities to abate, not ours. The county, the special assessments are not county money normally. They are from the cities, either for Duane with bills or for. Curbing debt or something. You can't, you cannot abate those.
Special assessment should be dragged out.
Yeah.
I I think we.
But that's again, that was in the state example.
That's why we brought it. That's why we brought it to the board here.
There's that stamp draft.
Yep.
We're looking through this.
So.
To answer the question, whose office is going to handle this? These petitions would have to be filled out annually by the respective departments. Given. To the assessors' office to vet.
I know two, I've got copies of two people in my town. That live in those houses that live there forever and then on the other side of their houses. So that is.
And that would probably encourage them to sign up a home set credit like you're saying. Just because they're there, don't mean they, they still got to come in and sign up for it.
So.
You need to put deadlines on those applications.
Right.
And I think they have to be by.
Just like Homestead has. Especially the same way we did.
You ask who's gonna handle it, the process of making this work is. They, they get, the petitions will be filled out by respective fire chiefs or designated, and then. That person will be required to bring them to the assessor's office.
The chiefs are gonna bring them or the people are gonna bring them?
The chief's gonna verify.
That, that's what the application is, the person wanting the credit abatement applies. Verified by their chief, that they meet the years of service that's outlined by the. By the board and the proposed ordinance, and then they submit that application.
So.
These are all. And, okay, is this going to be an annual thing?
Yes.
Does it say anywhere within the ordinance itself? That they would be required to be firefighter one or an E M P certified?
That's under the definitions of emergency service. Provider, it's defined out as, as defined in a hundred B fourteen, I did look that up in the meantime, so subsection two. Defines volunteer emergency service providers as volunteer firefighters, reserve peace officers. Emergency medical care providers, and they're defined out in the code two. Or other persons and personnel having voluntary emergency service duties. Were not paid full-time by the entity for which services are performed in the local service area. In a mutual aid agreement area or in the government's. That's, that's what would qualify.
This, on this schedule here, that zero to four, five to ten. And I'm a fireman and I have EMS. If I have one of the other occupations. Can you piggyback those together, or is it still the maximum you're gonna get?
Yeah, I don't think it envisions doubling up.
The one question that's posed to me is that. That's typically, because it quite frequently happens within our county, is the husband and wife both are.
So who gets it?
Or do they both get?
Either one. Yeah, that's.
Is that how it's typically worded, home state or household?
We have somebody who gets used this and lives on the line, the Crawford County conventions. Okay, so, but they live in, as, as the example we have from the couple that came down from Kyra. Okay, they're in Kyra, they're actually north of that county. How they gonna get it? I'm, I'm just asking.
We would really like for them to move Crawford County off that.
I just wanna make sure, I'm, that's probably a poor example, but there gotta be someone around here.
Well.
Because our district's still outside the area. What I'm trying to say.
The way the four county meeting all grasped the copy of this. I think if, if we get it passed and we get it working. It's gonna, it's gonna spread like the A T V or. And eventually, over a period of time, the states are coming to take it over, that's my envision.
So I think Article three, if you're letting an effective date to your proactive. So, the fact that this amount of credit shall be reimbursed by the Crawford County Tower, Tower, but. Because that was never, the people that had contacted me were assuming that was gonna come directly out of the Palmer's. At the end of the.
They didn't know this yet.
They did not know.
That was why this was on.
That's exactly right, and I really think that that's an important part of this, to get out to the general taxpayer. Because that was the concern, you know, we have a hard time with our budget the way it is, and you take sixteen thousand five hundred dollars out of what budget? You know, and that was the question, and I said, well, just give us a chance, a chance to make this over, so that to me.
We'd, we'd originally discussed that, where we would, how we would fund this.
So, if we were using fifty percent of these studies from the Verizon A T T cellular fund, how much money is that? How much money could this?
Currently it's. Just shy of fifty, when.
The towers.
When you sell. Gets past there, starts to pay actual hard cash rent, it will be about seven.
But right now, basically twenty-five thousand dollars is what. Right, is the threshold. So say that there are more and this amount exceeds sixteen thousand. Would we only pay up to the twenty-five thousand dollars out once the twenty-five is gone, the rest of them are just either first come, first served? Are we gonna have? We're not gonna find another revenue source, like Gina's talking.
First come, first served unless another revenue source would be identified.
They have that, you know, if, if a person starts volunteering when they're eighteen years old. And, you know, they're thirty-eight years old. This, this, you know, twenty years, they go, it goes on past even the time that they deceased. Because we're gonna give it to the. Surviving spouse. This is really a number that could really grow if we. Over time. Over time.
Well, that's why I like using the retirement thing, for instance, I mean, I, I, I sure appreciate people having. You know, but that, that's where.
And that's, that's, and so the reason for that we originally, you know, started talking about this is a way to. And to encourage, you know, younger individuals to, to help volunteer. You know, so I really wanna make sure we're hitting all those points on our reason for doing it, that it's going to encourage all of the above, and. But when you're doing zero to four, they're getting zero. And that's why I'm, I'm.
We can shrink that number down, but I will say this, that to receive any formal training anymore, either fire or E M F. It's a multiple year process. You don't get it a firefighter one.
It's one of the big hurdles.
They're, they're.
They're not willing to have that, but zero.
Potentially, they wouldn't have that training yet, so.
In that number of years? But it encourages them to do that.
But it encourages them to get that.
Right, in that first five years.
And you could even say that zero to four years, after you've received that, at that point, you could put a hundred dollars. Because we don't have, we start at two. So you could say one, you know, so that would encourage them to get training.
If they're certified in those first four years. You could change, to encourage them to step it up and get the training done, because a incentive is always good to get stuff done.
All good discussion, I just.
Making it too difficult?
No, we're not, but I think we need to. Take this home, you got notes made on yours, you got notes made on yours.
I'll, I'll make the revisions and recirculate it.
Yeah, it's all good discussion, but I think there's something that definitely need to be.
Great start, but I think that, and once the taxpayers of Crawford County are able to see all of the.
The one thing that, that just sticks, if we do not. I mean, if we fail, I mean, we don't have to do anything, we will continue to serve with volunteers the way we have. It's getting tougher, and if we have to start paying for the service, it's gonna be a lot more than twenty-five thousand dollars a year.
You know, we sat down there in a meeting at ISA. As they were talking about our volunteers, it was basically an EMS meeting. And, and we literally talked, if America had to pay for the services that our volunteer services perform for us. We'd probably be, just in the last ten years, it'd be well into billions of dollars, if not more. I mean, what they do is a very valuable service, to me, I don't look at this as paying them. I look at this as a, a reward for, or at least a darn thank. It's recognition, and it's, you know, I mean, as a veteran, I appreciate it from that perspective, but. I mean, you know, we always like to mention that our volunteers, our veterans are out risk their lives while our firemen and, and volunteer police. And EMS people are out there doing the same thing, and they're getting calls at one in the morning. And they're, they're racing out to, to save a, a home or a family, or, you know, life in particular, but. So I mean, I, I, I think it's, I think it's a value, I think it's a great gesture on our behalf. Plus, hopefully it'd be motivation to rebuild your source.
Volunteers get injured just as easy as bad guys, there's one from the Lincoln areas in the burning, through the field fire last Sunday afternoon, so. Lost two, it was in the grass last year.
Yeah, but. One last question, I'd like to revert to that. That, what, just in the back of my head, trying to think of who's gonna have the most problems with it. Wouldn't they have that at Westside?
I don't know, Charter Oaks.
How many of them live over in Carroll?
You're gonna have it.
I mean, you can't do it, but I mean. But that's after the.
We have people on Denison Park that do not live in our response districts. Every department, I can think of probably somebody from every department, I'm sure Kyle can too, that, that probably doesn't live. In their response district or in the county. And. You wanna add those people somehow, I don't know. I think if we could write a good.
I agree, I mean.
A, a good.
But if we work together.
Which may encourage them, now, I, I know other counties might not have. Income from, I know Sac County does, because I know they have some towers that they get income from, but I'm, you know, I know most.
But they might see it as a service that's.
Exactly.
They would rather just pay for it other coffers and keep it happening. That's not for us to decide, but we've got a revenue stream to backfill us.
We'll keep it on the agenda for next week.
It's not perfect, Eric, by no means, but it's a start.
I agree, I just, I just wanna make sure that there's a purpose. Well.
Okay, I'll make the revisions, I'll send it back up.
Very well, thank you. A letter to. Commission to assess damages about upcoming term. Okay, all right. You got the letter?
I don't have the letter yet, I wanted, I wanted to get the board's direction first, Jean came, brought to my attention last week. That the commission to assess damages, everyone on that commission, the all twenty-some odd of them, they're all up. For expiration at the end of the year this year.
Years we re-codify them annually, right?
Right, right, and so the idea was with all the things kind of swirling around the county, Jean inquired. To, if the board wants to take some kind of action, direct my office and a letter, send the chair, chairperson out to have a conversation. Just to ensure that we have a commission to assess damages. In the new year, I, 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 truth to be told, I haven't encountered this before, so if you guys have, is it, do they re-up? Terry, do, do, do they come in and?
Traditionally, when they die.
I mean, the board examines the listed commissioners and eliminates the names that are no longer with us. And try to fill those positions by speaking to people that are, that either fill those, we're working on. Feel like those assign. Because they need to have a specialization, bankers, auctioneers, appraisers. Ag, property committee. City and.
The judge gets picked from that pool, right?
There's all different qualifications for the different sections, so. Yeah, the board tries to fill those deceased positions, and if anybody were to notify us that they're no longer interested, note that. And those get filled.
So I think this letter was, with all the stuff circulating, that this will probably be drawn upon. Next year or the subsequent year, however, but we wanna make sure that these people are still willing to participate. So it's just a, a letter that would just say that you are.
I can't.
Assess damages and. Just touch on a little bit with all the stuff that's circulating and the chances of you being drawn from her. Make sure they're.
Twenty years ago, you're put on this form, you've never been called to service. So maybe remind them the importance of, you know, be willing to serve if called upon. And this is, would be a good time, you know, if they say, no, I just don't care to, we can make sure we have that whole board ready to go, and we're not scrambling. Fill positions when we knew, when we pointed them, they weren't interested anymore, they forgot, and they were even on that, you know, so.
Just maybe a list mailed out then once a year.
Yeah.
That's where this letter was.
Yeah, okay, so I will get something drafted up.
You know, appeals to their sense of community and looking after their neighbors.
And just kind of, what Jean was discussing last week, just notice. Just.
DOT is out there having problems buying a piece of ground, they bring in these guys to kind of. What, what does it look like in Crawford County, and that's what, they're gonna answer those questions to the judge.
And if it goes to eminent domain, helping to determine a fair price, you know.
Judge, no, they're not the judge and jury. He uses them, he uses that group to. They don't actually gather the information, is to.
This could go to a judge or a jury, then this committee would be asked upon with their expertise.
At judges discretion.
Is this fair?
We will get it mocked up and sent out.
Hazardous. Here's the latest draft of that.
I might have enough made up, I, I printed them for the. And I.
Um, I do have an extra copy of them. I think the one, one got printed earlier though, was. It meant to be double sided, but only printed on one side. And I don't think I had brought enough of the room. But I do have a couple extras.
Do we have anything in, when you went through this, is there anything off the ground?
That gets tied back to the.
No, I don't.
Because that's still the research.
Okay, so this proposed ordinance, we drew from multiple sources, Shelby County was a heavy influence on this. But what Martha and Dwayne attempted to do was pare down. Just a little more succinct for Crawford County. The definitions are all in the beginning. Article two begins with a conditional use permits, outlines that a pipeline company would have to submit. Uh, Article Two begins, uh, with the conditional use permits, outlines that a pipeline company would have to submit. Uh, per condition use permit after being approved by the I U B. Uh, there's requirements that they must meet under Section Two, uh, four, that must accompany that permit. Section Three outlines distances, uh, simply more requirements about what qualifications they have to meet within the county. Those distance, uh, markers for city limits, churches and schools and nursing homes, public parks, occupied structures. Heating operations and electricity, uh, generating facilities. Article Three outlines the approval of that permit, so essentially that permit would go and be, uh, given to the zoning administrator to review, to make sure that all the qualifications of this ordinance are met. Uh, if they're not, the zoning administrator will let them know, and they would have to re-submit a permit. Once all the conditions of the ordinance are met, it would then be passed on to the Board of Adjustment for approval. Also, any variances would go to the Board of Adjustment. And then they would, the Board of Adjustment would decide, uh, upon the recommendation of the zoning administrator, whether to approve or disapprove. If, uh, an entity does not like. Any decision made by the Board of Adjustment, uh, they would have to petition the District Court for resolution there. And that's in a nutshell. Oh, and going on Article Five, uh, covers abandonment, this continues removal of any pipeline. It just outlines what the company would have to do. Should they close up shop and not want to use it anymore.
So. Just say Article Five, number three. Property owner should not be required to have a pipeline with it. So, pipeline goes out of business. Owner says that, you're not.
Right.
But if the property owner agrees to the removal, or when it says agrees. This makes it seem like the company's going to come in and say they want to, what if they want it gone in the proper, the pipeline? I don't know if I can understand that part. Cause we've only got a minute to read this, let's say that the company doesn't want to remove it, they're just going to abandon it and leave. And the property owner wants it gone, they didn't want it there to begin with, so they want it gone, can they require the company to come in and remove it?
The requirements under subsections one and two, so a pipeline company. Would have to notify their intent to discontinue under subsection one. Upon abandonment or discontinue, they have to offer each property owner the option to have the pipeline and all facilities dismantled and removed.
Okay.
So they have to offer the property owner.
Okay. Whether they want their property destroyed or not.
Right, now, if they're done with it, they have to go to the property owner and say, hey, we're done with it, you want us to remove it?
Okay.
And then at that point, the property owner can say, I don't care. And I suppose, it's not specifically covered, but I suppose the pipeline company could even offer some kind of incentive. That, you know, if they, you know, if you let, if you don't make us remove it, you know, we'll enter into a contract about, and we'll give you some money. It could be, it could be covered, yeah.
So, since I haven't read it, you, you wrote it, I can't speed read fast enough, uh, let's say that they don't get it out of there in a hundred and eighty days, what is the penalty? All right, what's, what's the recourse? Yeah, what's the recourse? That's.
Cause you know. Written agreement.
Yep, well.
Their, their recourse should be in that written agreement.
Well, it says right here that they shall remove it in thirty days, but it doesn't really say. They just haven't done it and you want it out of there, uh, what's the recourse, what's the, if they're fine, is there a. How, how do you make sure they do that? Cause once they decided to leave, they're a bankrupt company, let's say, and they decide, nope. Move it, what are you going to do to me? I don't understand what.
Yeah, that's a good point, Gene, I don't think that's specifically covered, off the top of my head, I think.
Probably would they fall under that decommissioning ordinance? Or they gotta have. I don't think it's specific just to wind towers.
Well.
The one you guys. And, and that kind of says that when they get their additional use permit.
Yeah, but.
They have to. Some type, post something that the company is earning.
A bond or a escrow account?
Yeah.
Is that how it's working?
It, it's something like that, I.
Yeah, I would have to go review it.
I think maybe it would fall under that, that actually, in my mind, it covers a, a indications tower.
Yeah.
You know, it's not specific, it doesn't say just wind towers.
So should that, maybe that Article Two.
So you.
Tie it.
You could.
Have some verbiage tied back to the conditional use.
Maybe refer to that.
One of the things that we want this ordinance to do is not have any gray areas or any, I assume that.
So, building on your question, what about a bankrupt company?
Yeah. Yeah.
You know, so I, I think you're.
But therein lies why you'd have the escrow bond.
Yeah, right, yeah, and that's a vote.
I think that that's one of the tweaking, uh, paragraphs we might need to have, so that there's no questions and no.
Sure, sure.
Uh, but I haven't had a chance to read it all the way through, I'm a slow and difficult.
The only other thing, Ty, I talked about, maybe somehow tying this to our inspector in regards to.
Ground moisture.
Yeah, the compaction stuff that, you know, cause we decided that. Our inspector will have that information, cause there's still research of that.
You know, Iowa State's still obviously working.
Yes, but there'd be a verbiage in here that says any.
Yeah, and it's.
Any, uh.
Pipeline company. Dispute in regards to soil compaction, refer to. On, on whether they could work, you know what I'm saying, you understand that we're getting at there, Colin?
To resolve that dispute between.
Well, if they're, why they're, why they're installing the pipeline itself, you know, Iowa State's doing that study for us, what is the optimal ground moisture? Or the most destructive ground moisture content, if it's both, if it's above five percent or something. You know, then that would be too much compaction or destruction of the soil itself, so then you would, you know, have to take that day off. You know what I mean, that would be linked with, you know.
That the inspector should have that information in front of them.
Exactly.
After they determine that, but just have some verbiage in here that links. That concern to the inspector, I mean, we don't need to write the ordinance that states the whole, to reiterate what the inspector already has in front of them.
You want to make some reference to, you know, um, the conditional use permit might have to include. Like approval by the inspector.
Something like that.
For working conditions.
Yeah.
Based on that Iowa State.
I'm assuming they're going to have this whole handbook. Put together eventually, that the inspector will have to. Refer to as, is, is something that has been agreed upon by.
Yes, so there's, there's parts for the, during the construction phase. My understanding, what we're talking about during the construction phase, there's references in the Iowa code, um, the I U B and their administrative rules, which. Administrative rules kind of flesh out the code, they've got some more references in there, because it's already addressed there. We didn't specifically address that in here, because it would be just saying what's already being said, but if you would like us to, we can certainly.
Yeah, cause it would be construction and maintenance phase, I mean, if they'd have a reason they had to go out and maintenance it. You know, a maintenance line or whatever.
Just so that there's a reference back.
I mean, in the wintertime, it's probably not a big concern, the ground's froze, but in the summertime, or the spring.
So if we have an ideal moisture level from Iowa State and our ground is dry, that means we have to fill it back up again.
Fill the moisture up, you mean?
That's in dry land here.
Or they're going to find water to fill it up.
I have to bring that in.
No reference to that wouldn't hurt just so.
That's what, I, we were just thinking, we were just wondering if that needed to be something that was said in here.
Just a reference.
Because that's one of the things.
The whole thing, just a reference to it.
So, this letterhead, this is a new subject, cause are we going to ask for two inspectors? I think that's the next.
That's the next agenda item, did, oh, did I hand you that ahead of time?
Yes.
That was the next agenda item, yeah, no, they were, I, they were right next to each other, so I probably just handed out.
Let's go back to that one then, I was.
Any other? Concerns aren't in regards to this, right?
Things to make sure that we have our.
And certainly over the next week, if you guys find something that you want me to get from the next draft ordinance, just sending it out.
You're giving me a lot of homework.
Yeah.
I'll get my red pen out.
Thanks, Sean.
Yep. Be continued.
Court.
Speaking of inspector, are we going to have inspector, if it does get decommissioned, are we going to have the same rules as far as putting the tops, I mean, putting the soil back the way it's supposed to be? Is that addressed?
In the decommissioning? Returned, uh, like, like, right, like state.
If we were going back to this original, uh, ordinance that we had.
Original decommissioning ordinance, had that for the win.
Yeah, so, so we'll have to, we're going to not assume anything and revisit that, make sure that it does. All right.
Okay. Homework, homework, homework. The designation of county inspector, oh, sorry, Eric. Go ahead.
Wayne and I were, we were visiting over here in this corner, back in April of, if you look at the April twenty seven, twenty twenty-one minutes. You will find that zoning ordinance amendment, and it says, when applying for a construction compliance and so on and so forth, so you might want to refer to.
What was it again?
It was April the twenty-seventh, the minutes you can find.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, so I can look at that if you want to see about that decommissioning.
We'll have to revisit that, because a construction compliance certificate is specific to wind towers, so we need to, we'll need to go back and check that on our side. I didn't think we had the foresight to talk about cars.
I mean, we can just, you know, copy paste with a new label.
Yes. Why reinvent the wheel?
That was a pretty, that was a pretty good ordinance, I mean, it covered what we needed to cover.
At that time.
So I think that if we, I mean, there'll be something else comes up in the future.
All right.
Yeah, we've actually been pretty busy with this stuff.
Thanks. All right, county inspector.
So. My understanding is that, uh, Sunquest has been. Approved by the I U B, to be an inspector, uh, county has to. Approved by the board, but, uh, we have to inform the I U B as a county, who our inspector's going to be, and that with, that is this designation of county inspector proposed letter.
So this is just solidifying the actual we talked about here.
Yes. And it's notifying them, this is what we're going to have.
We can't take action on this.
We need to have that session about county, you know, there's five different.
Oh, my gosh, okay.
Sorry. Can we require two inspectors when it's going full speed and we've got five different?
Well, the, we can do that, this is going to solidify the Sunquest as well, and we can, we can go in agreement with another.
So there is already an existing contract with Sunquest, so if we're wanting to have any further discussion, you need to first go back to that contract and talk to Sunquest. And so if they're only planning to have, you know, five people deployed and you want ten, you're going to need to let them know that, hey, we've got a contract with you, but we're going to also look at another. For a company for a contract, and since you already have a contracted place, you don't want to go off and.
Just.
And that's why I break this up, because timing is all it, and if we need to do that prior to this, we need to.
Well, it benefits, it benefits us and the pipeline company if we've got adequate supply of.
Right.
Eyes on scene.
Sure.
So they can keep working on the good, that, good weather days.
Like if you go back again to a contract with a second, third, or fourth company, we would just do additional letters to I U B, you know, let them know, this doesn't stop you from talking to other companies, just. Before you enter into another contract, want to make sure you're not breaching your first contract.
Correct.
The question that I would have is, does Sunquest know our expectation of how many, uh, agents they should have there on our behalf?
We can all back in there, have a talk, across the table with them.
When we signed this, we had no idea what we were looking at, and we've been enlightened slightly on, on what the, you know, this is all involving, so. I, I think we should know for sure what our expectations are, are they sending one person out to take care of this, you know, all the way through Crawford County, how many? And that's something we don't want to assume either, that, uh, how, what are our expectations?
The lawyer that we had done at that state like supervision meeting, all the stuff he told us that we need to be watching for, that was like, oh my god.
Well, here's my suggestion with chairman, that we go ahead and approve this today.
Okay.
As something. Something is better than.
Yes.
We get Sunquest back in here and have a cross-the-table talk with them.
Okay.
If we feel their service they're going to offer is adequate, we're happy, if not, we, we, we search other avenues, and we need to, we'll just add another one.
Okay.
To their list.
All right.
So, this, Jerry didn't find a typo, so I'll have to fix that, and this would have to go on letterhead, and the date has been left blanked, so there are. I mean, we're not going to sign this physical document, you can approve the, the county designation letter, and I will make those.
With that, I guess.
And so when we adopt this designation, county inspector, the files with I U B.
I'll second that.
If the move is certain to. The, the county inspector. To the I U B as Sunquest Engineering. Question has been called, all in favor, saying goodbye by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right.
Before you leave today, I'll get you. The typo correctly. Okay.
They should be able to help with that in letterhead.
Okay.
That's.
Yes.
Or they could forward you the letterhead.
Okay, I'll get it.
So, however you want to do that, and just reletter and just try and figure out what that.
Thanks, Colin.
We're keeping you off of this, because all this.
Yeah.
I don't want you to get bored over there.
Yeah.
All right.
Do we still have?
We'll discuss it when it's on.
Here already. Judges.
Oh, that's going to be, that's tonight.
That's tonight, yeah, okay.
All right.
The eleven o'clock item on the agenda is the Verizon Wireless contract, this is the contract that we're currently in with the Verizon Wireless on the tower right here by the courthouse. They sent us notice, I think the annual sent a notice that they want to renegotiate. And I don't, we have no reason to renegotiate, I say we just leave it as is.
Wayne, this is what you came to talk to us about before, wasn't it?
All, all, um, tower companies are kind of like, um. They have tower lease consultants, like property tax consultants, and so they're kind of the head hunters, they're always going and saying, hey. Times are tough for Verizon, although my bill just came. And, you know, we want to cut the rent we pay you, but, but we'll give you, uh, instead of give you a three percent a year, we'll give you ten percent for a, for a five-year term. And so evidently they'll know that we know compound interest, three percent for five years is a lot more than ten percent.
Yeah.
Things like that, so, and then they will also go in there with trick language that they'll take out, that they have to notify the own, the lease or, uh, prior modifications. And so they'll also put in there, like, uh, we have in there that any modifications must be approved by our consultant. Our, our social engineer, uh, associated engineering.
It should be your first right.
All of the info on there, you know, so, just, and they're really good with language, you know, if you have to read the lease, they have to read their changes. Highlight the differences, because they're, they are sharp, but that's how they make their.
It's a lot like in private business, we get people to call us and say, we can reduce your electric rate or your water rate.
It's a lot like in private business, we get people to call us and say, we can reduce your electric rate or your water rate or whatever by doing this and this and this, and then we get half of what you get. It's happening in all industries. Is that for this, this tower out here?
Yes.
The one that's eighty-five, ninety-five percent fulfilled?
We're at a hundred.
We're at one ten here.
We're up to a hundred. We can't go up to a hundred and ten whereas the I U B. There's really not physical.
You said it looks pretty full of me.
But I know Verizon abandoned their position, which is the top.
That's why they can't answer anymore.
Or U S L.
Okay. So I guess the question that I was posed, is this something that, obviously I don't believe none of us want to open a contract at this time.
How long's that contract for?
It was originally twenty years. As it gets down to the end, it's automatically renewable for two-year term.
I bet you know.
Yep. I think it's down to maybe the last five-year term right now.
So we don't need to worry about.
And if it does expire, it goes to a two-year automatic renewal.
So do we need to just send a letter back to them?
That is what I typically do is email if they're.
We're not.
Whether we know where they are or not.
In this whole.
And for future reference too, we all need to remember that when we did the tower modifications with U S L and A T and T, they both came in and paid half of the bill. Originally, it was gonna be, they were all gonna pay a third, about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars total. And at, in the end, Verizon said, no, we're not gonna participate. So A T and T and U S L jumped in and each paid half. So my feeling is if we ever do have some renegotiation with Verizon, they need to come forward on making their deal good. That's all depends when you get those negotiations.
Okay, another question. In our effort to relieve some of the hats, I'll use the way. Is there another company that I don't know enough to negotiate with, say, where tower people? Is there somebody that, obviously this would be just a quick emails, we're not, just, we don't, we wish to negotiate, but five years from now. Hey, you may not be around anymore. We're probably, we're gonna need to start looking for somebody to, is there, do you know of anybody that does that kinda stuff?
I know Associated Engineering does some.
Okay.
And they're the one that built our tower with Verizon twenty years, fifteen years ago, whatever it was. And they have, you know, they, they are a power structural, structural engineering company. But, and then they, they designed the modifications and what would you call it? Project managed those structural modifications. And that's who I call, if I had the advice, I call down.
Go ahead.
Is there any chance once, once we get a, once we get these other towers up, that we'll be able to put other devices on them? So maybe somebody with that structural knowledge would be a good idea, so maybe they could negotiate leases for us for other.
I do, I would agree, yes.
Yeah.
So I think we need to make contact with them.
Absolutely.
And see if we can.
It's a great idea.
Start a. There go, throw it out, discussion with them in regards to that, but would, would we be wrong to ask Dwayne to send us emails back to him at Verizon right now?
It's easy.
Thank you.
So. Is that fair enough?
Yes.
Please, thank you.
Thanks, Dwayne, if you wanna give me a, a phone number, something to contact first, so I can reach out to them and start.
Make sure that they would be open to something like that first, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So they know.
That is something that we're gonna need to look for, look at.
Pretend to do it.
Yep. Let's see, within half a year or so, we might start getting some calls, since people, all of them are up.
I know Verizon's looking around Charter Oak area right now.
Where?
Around Charter Oak.
They gotta build that one in Tyrone yet?
That's done.
It's done?
Good.
County's contribution to Wellness Center, Jane?
What this is about is the financing committee and our grant asking committee is asking how they can move their county's funds into the Wellness Center of, of fund. And as you recall, our ordinance.
Shows a motion.
Motion specifically states that we're not doing anything until we're sure it's going through. So then one will, you know, have that money out there and then find out they weren't. So the question is, well, how do, what they might need is a letter of some sort, because these grants are kind of matching. And so, you know, right now they have X amount of dollars that are pledged. And so they need to kinda have that in a more official capacity. I, I was pretty sure we couldn't move the funds from ARPA into this wellness fund yet.
Yeah.
Yeah, so can we get a letter?
In support saying when they do this, we'll do that?
That we have the, the funds are, are committed, pledged.
The funds are committed upon.
Completion of blah, blah, blah.
Or, yeah.
The motion back in April, the minutes indicate that the county would commit up to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of ARPA funds pending.
Pending.
The city of Dennisens commitment.
Got that.
And the market analysis for the wellness facility.
Got that.
And so. Some, some open question marks as I, as I read this is the up to. I mean, I understand the cap, county won't contribute so much. But there, I noticed there's no percentage of contribution. If the Wellness Center, for example, costs a million dollars, it's not going to, let's just hypothetic, hypothetically say that it does.
Wish it were.
Alright, and, I mean, is the county, is the city gonna expect from the county seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards a one million dollar project?
I think that that match was designed to, for the city. If the city does, will go up to what the city does, up to seven.
Matching.
It's a matching, so.
Where does the, where does the transfer come in here then, between?
No worries.
H and, and us.
That, that's a whole, that's, they've already done that from what.
That's why we're. We kinda checked to C C M H.
Right, right, so that's, that's part of this, you know, in order for the gals that are writing the grants, they need to show the support and where, that there's already money committed. And the money from the city is already in, so they're using that, those funds. Cause we have architect, we have the design almost, it's pretty much approved.
City's already spent seven hundred and fifty?
No, 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 no.
They, they did commit their seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Yes, absolutely. So we just need something showing the county is in and that the, so that they can start using that with their grant.
This is a personal letter, it says we have one to spend.
Funds are available.
Funds are set aside.
Put all those fancy words in there.
Would you like us to mark something up, big guy?
That would be awesome.
Please.
Put some of that.
Yeah.
Would you, thank you.
Uh, the other thing that came up, Terry sent an email out about spending ARPA funds out of the S L F R F program, which is the spending arm of ARPA, is that actually the S L F R F. The difference between a sub recipient and a beneficiary and then the requirements for each, the reporting requirements. So by my reading, I've only had a week with this, maybe a little bit less, but my understanding right now is that this wellness center would be more properly considered a sub recipient and not a direct beneficiary. And direct, that sub recipients have reporting requirements. And so it, it would probably be prudent on the county's part to ensure that they have at least, I mean, they probably don't have, they have to have, what they say here is an active S A M dot gov registration, a U E I number or T I N to, to get the money. So I imagine they have that stuff either in the works or in place, but we would probably, we would want verification that they're able to receive this money when the county gives them.
Right. Well, is this project going through the city funds, through city financial system?
I, my common sense tells me that's the city, well, we're, you know, cities. The layers, they added all of that for sure that they have those.
I have not heard any of that. Well, if they've received.
Received their money if they hadn't.
Right, true, well, they didn't receive it, but, but giving it out to somebody.
You received any.
So K R Buck was like, so Gene, when's the county gonna do their portion of it? That's kinda how that gen.
Yeah.
So I just wanna.
I would assume you guys have got that, but, but you don't assume things like that.
Yeah.
I think you wanna make sure.
That's why it's done the agenda, that's why it's for us to just mess it out loud and make sure.
We can reach out to the city and.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, please.
Yes.
Yeah, if they've received any assistance with firefighter grants in the last ten years, you have to have a S A M.
And they have.
Yeah.
So they will have that.
The city would, but my question is, does, does the group that's receiving the money have that?
I think they're banking.
And that's right, and the check would be cut to.
I don't think it's more concerned on your giving, I don't know.
Yeah, we don't know yet.
They have, are they getting it as a beneficiary or two, three, two to the city?
I don't know. Is the city their fiscal agent or where?
That's what I was.
It's gonna belong to them, so I, you know, those are all the finance committee and.
Right. We need to know that before we cut a check to them.
Yes. Maybe you didn't know a name.
Cause they're gonna have to, and they're gonna have to report.
As far as the discussion item on the agenda though, is the letter.
Yes, the letter.
Can be sent, drafted and sent. And then they, when it gets time to actually cut check, we will need.
Know about it.
That's correct. But.
Drafted review.
Yes. This conversation, I wanna make sure that everybody knows.
We wanna give them what you try to.
Right.
Just try to.
And the grant, the.
Just trying to stay on.
Our grants are very important to us, so.
Thanks, Colin, for that.
Thank you.
And that information is key, but. Good discussion. The letter from your own, so.
Alright.
Do we have anything else for our attorney staff to do this?
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Thank you too, very much. Okay. I think we can check off everything that's on the agenda, other than the citizens input section. Citizens input?
I didn't read through this whole thing, but what I could find is there's no private wills, our private wells information.
Let me all cover.
Water, there's a water source in there.
Maybe we can just put public or private.
Shelby, I think so adding that to their.
So we need to add. Section three, article six, private, needs some private will. Thanks. Yes, you may. Okay. That's out. Checking with the towers. I went to Milla and, and. Fail and talk to the, the tower guys are out there, the concrete guys are out there. I wanna talk to you a little bit after we meet. And I'm surprised how much concrete they're gonna put in.
Thirty yards.
Thirty yards on the base of the tower? Yeah, or more, depends on, and how deep they're going, anywhere from thirty-six to thirty-eight feet. Yeah, that's just that dang bad soil where we chartered. Raises horn very good. Yeah, it does. That's the other part that, um, this Alert Iowa is something that Dwayne, Dwayne with nine-one-one, myself and Rod Bradley are working with, this is the, he's the I T with the, with the town center. And Dwayne can probably help me explain how that works, but there's a, it's a short synopsis on how Alert Iowa works. It comes over your, your cell phone or your local home phone, you can put it on. If you go through, through alertiowa.gov and set it up, it's not ready to go yet. But working on getting it ready to go and you have to dump all the information, what do you call it?
You have to register.
You have to read, the people have to register, but you have, you guys as nine-one-one have to dump all the information into a system for the Iowa, for the, for Alert Iowa. Explain that, please.
So we basically take our, our database and put there with their information. And so let's say the sheriff wants, we have a missing, whatever. He can send that to the Department of Homeland Security. David Pickett, the area of Crawford County, or maybe you wanna do all of Crawford County.
Those have a text message.
No, send, yeah, either all or whatever, yes. However you register to have it.
It'll call your home phone, it'll call your, your cell phone. With an announcement, they send it.
And some of you may be in all or.
Yeah.
Maybe on the school, you know, the school has a late start, school notification, it's something like that.
Okay.
That'd be cool. And then it gives it redundancy because the state has more than one piece app on Public Service point. And so, you know, they say we're out, you know, say we're gone, you know, they can still send it to those that are able to receive it.
My, my one concern about this now is, is our law enforcement gonna be out ticketing those people that are following, chasing fire trucks? Well, it's.
It would not be, it would only be information, it would only be something you would want published.
Yeah.
Like a Amber Alert, you know.
It'll do, it'll do like Amber Alert alerts, it'll be weather, anything we wanna put in. If there's a, if there's a hazardous material spill, we wouldn't want, we want at least that area to know about. That's, that's pretty good.
Yes.
And that's my.
It's not for emergency responders, it's for the public.
Well, getting back to my original concern is the, the missing girl three years ago by Charter Road. We have no idea. How many people there.
Right, there was no.
It was mass chaos, so this goes out, missing three-year-old north Charter Road. Of course, you know, I could just, hopefully that this tool, which is another tool, will be used wisely. Cause it, it's a good tool if used.
Right, if you intend to participate in a search, you need to be there at eight A M at the.
Fire command center. At this address.
Yeah. Any of the established roads blocks, you know, basically do what we did out by the hospital when we did that one.
Yep. That was orchestrated, right?
A little better.
But.
But we knew.
It had a time to evolve too.
We knew where we, where our faults were.
Right, where did you get your owl?
As Jake.
Jake, okay. Cities look at something like that. And then, and then thirdly, my board okayed me getting, getting us to pick up. Eric was there, Ty was there, and thank you Ty for showing up and both there, and Eric too, we had all but one town. Yeah, so it was very good.
Good.
So hopefully Ford, apparently Ford can order come, come Friday, so we'll see. They can't, there is one over another town, but I'm not real thrilled about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Anybody else? Yeah. How can you get a hard copy?
Get a hard copy of your presentation, I saw that, I assumed that was handed out. No, otherwise, I don't, I don't know the process of possible. I have one. Okay, well, I mean, very, very, such, into another, I couldn't give it.
Is this that?
Yeah, I think that's what it was. Thank you.
Oh, here, here's another, yes, Mike.
One other income source for these towers, Western Iowa Wireless out of Rollup. They sell internet connections.
They're, they're, they're aware that these towers are going up.
Okay, they know, okay, cause they'd be probably very.
I think this is what you're looking for. Oh, I might have some.
Yeah, I'm sorry, on the proposal ordinance, it says for, assuming that it's an appropriate city, not less than two miles. Are you expecting Summit to buy by that? Are you expecting Summit to buy by that?
Well, I. My, my personal thought is that if that interferes with them, they can go and ask for variance. And. Knowing what I know now of the proposed pipeline, they're going to, that would could be a problem for. This is what I, what I've seen of proposed pipeline with, it's within a mile or so of Denison.
Right, and.
Less weight probably also, yeah, so.
So it'll be up to them to, to ask for variance.
I would believe it'd be up to them to request a variance on those and then the Board of Adjustments or whatever. And or cities would have their grant and such for variance. That's my opinion.
Yeah. The companies can seek to reach an agreement with the city and. Between the county and the city, they can go less than two miles. And then if they, they don't, then they can ask for a variance, which would then go to the Board of Adjustment.
So where's the landlord and all that?
Well, this is just for the city.
So the landlord would still have to agree.
Oh, for sure, yeah.
If, if that, yeah, I, I think that was your question.
Right, they're close to a church, they go to get the church.
And so if I'm not a landlord, but I have a house nine hundred eighty feet away, I would have to agree.
That'd be number four, that'd be the I construction.
Yes.
Yep. So, okay, Cameron. Any else? Citizens inside.
I'm a G agent.
The motion is moved and signed that during this meeting, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Oh.
And it's not.
Eventually they'll circulate back. But at least it's.
Yeah, thank you very much, Dwayne. Can you get me a copy of that list, Jerry?
Great, what's up? Are you bad?
Do you want this back, Kyle?
Yeah, so I, I don't know what I already said, I don't know what I have for scribble on there, but I really.
Two sided, talked up.
Just, just give it to her. Yeah. I need to stick around and sign something.
We have meeting at twelve o'clock.
The hardest part to get the letterhead on it.
Not even hard, you just go in, pull it up, take it out and reprint it.
I'll stick around here, sure. Unless the auditor wants to come out. Does it maybe have a cornfield?
That was fun.
Oh, wow.
We're, we're back to the.
You could have had lunch out there or something.
If I had to go back to church.
We're back to the same field.
You're in the same spot. I've come.
We just took her out, no, we just took her out at Old Building, so those are, you get in there, do some work. Because I figured that was my last.
I think I went a long way, though.
You did take it all the way.
I did.
But you got to see.
I did. I should have the county people at car wash.
But anyways, I just wanted to ask. Really? Way more than I ever.
Do you have on, do you have on the, where are we, just have them on? Most of the stuff is done with the week or whatever.
But these, that's true, there are.
Jerry, stop, she just texted.
It's been that much different.
Yeah. Same Riverside, everything.
All right.
Just one of those. I don't.
I'd expect.
Not you, Jeff, you can't.